Welcome to the Mound City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, October 22nd at 6 o'clock. We're in Mound City Council chambers. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for showing up. We got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
I have a resolution in front of you. We received two gambling applications for the Gillespie Center over the weekend, and the timing is such that we couldn't really push it to the next meeting. So if you would be willing to update the consent agenda with the addition of the resolution granting the premise permit and then the two applications.
Okay.
I think this is yours. And that can just be one item.
Did you get a copy of that?
Uh, no.
Okay. There's two filled out and then there's one.
I have the resolution, but I didn't have the additional one.
So what is it for? It just says the name of it.
It's, uh, two raffles that they're holding.
Oh, raffle, okay.
Yeah, one in November, one in January.
Okay.
Oh, this is it.
That and then this.
Yeah, I got that part.
Okay, so we'll put that on the resolution, or sorry, the consent agenda for item G. Does that work? Okay, so we got our consent agenda. Or sorry, our agenda with the amendment. Can I get a motion to approve it?
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, are we doing the agenda or just the consent?
Just agenda, right?
Um, just the agenda as written and the consent agenda with additional item G.
Uh, well, just the agenda with amendment of G.
Just the agenda with the amendment of G.
All right, you've got a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, now we got the consent agenda. Does anybody want to read through those?
Um, I can do that.
Okay.
Um, consent agenda, items A through G. Approved payment of claims is A. B, approved minutes from the October 8th regular meeting. C, action on resolution approving Lake Minnetaka Historical Society Sixth Amendment to the lease agreement. D, 2022 lift station miscellaneous pay request to Norlings. E, 2023 lift station miscellaneous pay request to Norlings. F, 2024 manhole rehab pay request, number one, to Floor Coat Midwest. And addition of G, resolution approving lawful gambling, um, permit for the Gillespie Center.
Okay. So we got our consent agenda. Does anybody want to talk about any of those? No? All right. Can I get a motion to accept or approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. And can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pew.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Mayor Holt.
Aye.
All right, all of that passes. So if you're on, if you're in the audience for those, those are all approved. All right, number five, we got comments and suggestions from anybody that their item is not on the agenda. If you want to bring your item up and you get, uh, give us your first and last name and address. And you got three minutes.
Hello, Tom Zuccarel, 4760 Bedford Road. I live on the island. I'm 62 years old. I grew up here. I left when I was 18, joined the military, came back here last year, and I'm the most grateful resident you have. But, um...
But.
I found something because, um, I'm very health-oriented and I happen to go through three dozen eggs a week. And the eggs that are produced in these facilities that can have up to 32 million hens inside of it are not the healthiest eggs in the world. And we have a, in Chapter Four of the city ordinance, a restriction against people in Mound having any, uh, hens, uh, for their own personal use. And I think that in and amongst the boa constrictors, bears, lions, foxes, all the rest that, um, is out there, and actually in Chapter 14, is that we can probably relax it a little bit, give us some freedom, and permit that process for a couple animals to include turkeys. So hens, roosters, and turkeys is kind of what I'm talking about. So I would like for that to happen, and, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Tom?
Chime in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or do you want to go?
Yeah, you go.
You go first.
Um, we, we talked about this earlier, uh, at our annual meeting with the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And a lot of cities do it, like, based on lot size.
Yeah.
You know, and zoning and stuff like that. So we thought a lot of it in Mound, you know, like, may or may not fit. Uh, but this is, like, I was in the Planning Commission previous, and it's something that would, um, if you can attend their next meeting.
Yeah.
And bring it up.
So...
Like, they were the ones that would deal with that probably first or kind of, you know, get, get the discussion started.
So my lot is 165 wide by 300 feet deep.
You have a big lot.
And it's surrounded by the, um, wetlands that is right next to the lift station on the island. And so my neighbor has an equally large lot. And I understand that there are, um, there are some, uh, probably predominantly small lots. But even some of those depend, depending on, um, their size and the ability to, and how many hens, you know, there, um... You know, for me, you know, I could probably have a horse and, uh, and other things if they weren't in there. You know, I, I'll have dozens, literally a dozen deer at one moment in there. So, um, I'm just asking for the permitting process to abide by, for instance, the agricultural extension has, we don't have to recreate the wheel. There's guidance out there from the USDA through the university's agricultural extensions that, um, talk about raising these animals in an urban environment. And some, for some people, depending on the size of their lot, the size of their house and whatever other, it wouldn't work. But for some people, it does. So I think that, you know, we permit for dogs and other things. It can't, in my mind, be so workload-intensive as to just wipe a, uh, you know, across-the-board restriction on the whole populous amount. I, you know, I would not, maybe you'll get initially, if this were to go through, a, a lot of people. But, uh, but then it would basically stop and it would just be a trickle. And you, the procedures, the requirements, I believe, are existing out there at this time. For instance, um, Blaine, Bloomington, Brooklyn Park, Duluth, Eagan, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Minneapolis, St. Paul even, and St. Cloud all allow it. And they have restrictions. Some of them will restrict the roosters because they make a little noise and they frankly are useful because they protect the, the flock. And, and I would like, that would, I would recommend that that's a separate, um, from the hens itself because me living on that wetlands there, there's fox in there and there's all kinds of other predators in there that come out of there. So, um, it's nice to see that we have that here. But, um, I appreciate it, yeah. I, I, I just think it, this is a good time to, to make this happen.
All right, councilmember Pew.
As one of the members who was supportive of the request to have hens, I think that what we need to do is, um, I don't even know if there's a group. There, there are a number of residents who have asked for this before. And I think it is bringing forward a proposal that gives us some guidance as to some of the restrictions. The last group proposed to not have roosters because of, you know, their early morning song. And, uh, and, you know, and there were, there were concerns that, um, that the chickens would draw other predators to the neighborhoods. There were things like, people had, that you had to have hen houses. There are hatches, I guess they're called, that you can get that, that will do six or 12.
Yeah.
And, and there's confined sizes that they had to be fenced in, that people couldn't let them roam, you know, freely on their street. Which I, which I've almost hit one in Shorewood about is, because they have them there. So, you know, bring us something a little bit more solid. And I try and reach out to other folks in the community who have been interested in this.
I would, I was going to volunteer my efforts to, to start something, and I will do that. The only requirement I would have is I wouldn't, if, if I could get some information on who the other individuals are and then we could work together.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we have their names to, but they'd be...
Yeah, look up Facebook.
Look up?
They're all on there.
Look it up on Facebook?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding. But for real, there are, there are people on there that want chickens in Mound, so, um... So we, we did go through this a couple of years ago. It was right before I was on council.
Yeah.
And then when I was on council, four years ago, when I started...
Very short conversation.
It was a very short conversation. And I said, "Well, I'm, I'm open to hearing the discussion," because I wasn't here before, right? And it kind of didn't really go anywhere fast. So I'm open to hearing about it, but I will say, from just being around for the last four years, is that it is staff, time and energy, you know, it's our inspector. That's another problem, too. We already have enough issues with just his time, um, you know, going out and, you know, making sure everything else is put together in Mound. You know, the whole disease thing is the rooster, you know, all these other things can be worked through, I think. But, and then, of course, our lot size. So I've heard all the different pros and cons for it, but, um, I would say if you want to reach out to Jesse, our city manager, and then maybe he can connect you with some of the old data that we had on it, and then you can maybe kind of go through there.
Yeah.
And see how far, maybe, I don't know if you can track down the council meetings, maybe you can watch those.
So I can probably just send you an email to link up?
Probably, if you could get the local paper to put something in and have people, you know, respond to an email or, or an mailing address, they'll respond. And the people who want this are very, very proactive.
There's, there's a small group that really wants chickens. And I will say, in our workshop that he talked about, this was a joint planning and, um, council workshop with the Planning Commission. And I'm pretty sure there's one guy maybe that wanted it and the rest of us didn't. Or just didn't want to, you know, spend the time and energy to do it, so...
Because one, one, one planning commissioner wanted it and the rest were, had been around long enough.
Yeah, that, I mean, we're open to the idea, but you got a big hill to climb, is my point. So it depends on how much time, how much is worth...
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm a disabled vet.
Yeah.
I don't have a job.
Oh, well, there you go.
I have a humble abode. And I don't go out to dinner. I'll, I'll go get an $8 hamburger so I can see people, old friends and stuff, at Fletcher's. But, um, you know, three dozen eggs a week, um, you know, in order to get something that's not produced in a 32 million, uh, populous hen-laying facility i- is what I choose to eat.
Sure.
And, um, but it's expensive. So I, I can't be the only one that can benefit both health-wise or, um, you know, with just having the access to this and, and the healthier product. So, um, I will do, I will, you know, this will, I, I'm good at engaging in things like this, so I will.
Connect with Jesse. He'll give you...
Do you have a card?
An email of...
I can, I can, I can write your name down.
And also, you know, talk to the people at the university extension.
I will do that, ma'am.
Because they can help you figure out how to organize it.
Yeah, so I, I've worked with, um, also the agricultural extension on other things, and they're super helpful.
And just so you know, this probably is a good time of year to bring this up because next year, there might be different people sitting up here.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know about planning, if we have any turnover next year, but we do. Okay. So we, so going into next year is maybe, maybe not the next month or two, but the next few months, into the new year, might be a better time to get this, you know, conversation started, so...
Okay.
Yeah, reach out to Jesse. He'll point you in the right direction.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll reach out to you.
Thanks for your service.
I have another, um, event I need to go to.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we got number six, public hearings, ordinances, amending city code, Chapter 129. And do we want to talk about the amount of people up here right away?
Oh, I, I can do it at the end.
Right there, because either we're going to talk about it...
When I, like, introduce what your next steps are.
Okay, all right.
But thank you.
Yeah.
If I forget. Because I didn't write it down.
All right.
All right, good evening. There's, uh, three items that we want to discuss with you this evening about zoning code amendments. Uh, these are all topics that were identified in the joint workshop between the Planning Commission and the council. Uh, the Planning Commission has spent time at two different meetings, uh, talking about these and providing direction. Um, and they have put forth before you some proposed ordinance amendments. Um, so I'm going to talk about all three of them, um, in my presentation. Though if you have questions before I move on, we can certainly do that as well. And then I'll kind of summarize the next steps.
Okay.
Um, so the three topics are accessory dwelling units, solar energy, and electric vehicle charging. So we are proposing to amend three sections of the code as part of the process. Uh, one is to amend, uh, the definitions, to add a definition for an accessory dwelling unit. The second is to update the use table so we can specifically allow them in specific districts. And the third is to create a subdis, a subsection of the accessory buildings, um, section of the code to talk about accessory dwelling units themselves and have the standards. Uh, the definition is similar to what we had talked about earlier this year. It's a self-contained unit with a kitchen sleeping area and full bathroom facilities, which is located within, attached to, or on the same lot as an existing residential dwelling. Uh, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation that we include what is a, a full bathroom facility, so we did add that based on the Planning Commission recommendations. You can see toilet sink and shower tub. Um, that was an amendment recommended by the Planning Commission. Relative to where it's allowed, it's proposed, uh, it, to be allowed in residential districts, so R1, R1A, and R2 as an accessory use. And then in the mixed-use downtown and the mixed-use commercial districts as a permitted use. You'll notice that there's kind of two different ways that we're talking about these, and that's because our residential table has not been updated to our new structure. That's something that still needs to happen. So the As in the coming months will change to Ps, but for now, we're trying to match what's in the code today. Um, it's just easier to keep them, and then we have other code amendments Sarah and I are working on, so we'll be back up here in a couple of months to do more, but... Um, so in both cases, they're permitted as an accessory use. Uh, the, I'm going to walk really through the sections in terms of the standards, but I don't want to dwell on them because hopefully that makes sense, and if not, I'm happy to answer questions. Right now, the proposal is that an accessory dwelling unit would only be allowed where there is a single-family dwelling lot, dwelling unit, meaning even if you were in, uh, the mixed-use district where we allow townhomes, you wouldn't be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit with a townhome. If you're in, uh, R1A district or R2 district where they allow two-family, at this point, we wouldn't allow them with a two-family either. Um, so this is something that's just for a single-family dwelling unit. That's what's being proposed today. Uh, and a single-family dwelling unit is only allowed a maximum of one ADU, so you'd still end up at maximum two dwelling units on a lot. Uh, location, uh, the standards say that it can be a single-family dwelling in addition to a single-family dwelling unit or as a detached accessory building, so different options. And we have different standards based on these. That's why that becomes important because it's, uh, was important to identify the standards if it's a detached building, how we're going to treat that. Um, if it is, yeah, we can. Oh, is it not working again? Okay. It's weird because it does that and then it's fine. We'll try it. Okay, I'm just going to rerun the slideshow. Do you want to wait?
How long has it not been working?
Can I keep going? Okay. Uh, let's see. So in terms of an ADU size, uh, this is a discussion topic that the Planning Commission did spend some time on. Uh, what it was determined was the recommended language was that an ADU shall be limited to 800 square feet in size. However, if the single-family dwelling unit itself is smaller than 800 square feet, so, then it would be limited to no more than the actual footprint. So the concern was that you would end up with a small house, a 400 or 500-square-foot building with an 800-square-foot ADU. Um, but we also didn't want to make it so that if you had a larger structure, that you were, uh, limited in some way. So that is the, kind of where the Planning Commission landed and trying to figure out. Um, the idea is it really should be accessory, not a big structure. Uh, if the ADU, it, either if it's in the principal structure or if it's an accessory building, the thought is that it should meet the principal structure setbacks. Uh, that means that, uh, you would be limited to the same rear yard, side yard, front yard setbacks. Um, and so that is something that's noted, notable only because that will limit its use, uh, especially the rear yard setback. In some cases, you may not have a lot of room to do it. But, um, that is where the comfort level is for accessory dwelling units today. In terms of height, uh, the idea is that it would not exceed, uh, two and a half stories or 35 feet. Uh, and that's when it's part of the principal structure, same height standards. If it's an accessory building, then it wouldn't exceed the height standards of the single-family dwelling. So if you have, uh, one-story structure with a, you know, a fairly small roof, pitch roof, you'll be limited and it, the idea is that it should match, similar to what we do with accessory structures. So we're trying to, one of the reasons this is in the accessory structures section is that anything is supposed to be treated more similar to an accessory structure. Uh, design, just wanted to know that it should be consistent in appearance with a single-family unit. It was felt that we should have some type of paved struck, uh, surface to connect the ADU to the driveway, a street. It shouldn't be just plopped in a rear yard or a side yard and really no way to get in and out. So those are fairly limited design standards. Um, and then the last couple of elements, uh, maximum number of occupants would be no more than allowed by the building code. Um, that's the easiest way of, of doing that discussion. Otherwise, it gets pretty complicated trying to figure out why a certain number is the right number. So if they have a 800-square-foot structure, you probably, you would have, you would be allowed to have more occupants than if you had a 400-square-foot structure. So it's, it's kind of size-based on the ability of the space. Is it working now?
No.
Oh, no.
It's okay.
It's interesting. It's been a couple of months before that, since that's happened. Do you want, how do you want me to handle, just keep going?
So the video is just not showing?
It's just, the PowerPoint's not showing, but it's still showing you, so you can...
Okay, so they can hear what you're saying.
Okay, so I have to explain even better. No, just kidding.
You're doing a good job.
Uh, parking-wise, an ADU should be required to have one off-street parking, so that's above and beyond, uh, the standards. So if you have a single-family home, you're required to have two parking spaces. This is one more to make sure that the ADU has a parking space. Uh, the owner occupant, there has to be an owner living on the property. Um, so either in one of the two dwellings, it doesn't matter which dwelling, um, but the owner needs to reside on the property. Uh, the ADU shall not have a separate utility connection. Um, so that was a determination and recommendation specifically from the Planning Commission as well, um, that they should be tied together closer, uh, together. And then the idea that the ADU should not be sold independently, um, that they have to be tied together. So as I said, the Planning Commission reviewed it. The areas that they spent the most amount of time on were the square footage, trying to make a determination about how big an ADU, uh, could be. They had the recommendation about the changing, uh, relative to the definition. Um, and then the utility connection. Otherwise, they were, they were pretty comfortable, uh, with the recommendation. I'm wondering if I should pause here and just answer questions about ADUs, if any, before I go on to the next topic?
Well, we have, we have a, a limit on coverage of land. So the ADU on a lot with an existing structure still is, can...
The impervious surface coverages of the lot will still be applied. 30% or 40%? Is that what the question was, just to confirm?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was kind of my only question. Like, I don't know if this is the right term, but like, a conforming lot, like, it would, with, with the ADU, it would still have to meet the hardcover requirements.
Yes.
And like, the lot size and all that, and...
Correct.
I was kind of walking myself through all the different situations.
That is how we would apply the code?
Yeah, everything seemed, like, I found an answer to everything I was thinking of.
Similar to, if you look at that accessory building section where this is going to be embedded, we don't reference the impervious surface coverage in there. That's assumed to be still applying because that's in the underlying zoning district. Um, but if that's something that you find uncomfortable, we could handle it a different way. But all of the traditional standards, setbacks, impervious surface, all of those still apply.
Yeah, like the ownership thing and all, all that stuff. I mean, it all was very well thought out and everything, but I guess, a- as you mentioned, the paving or like some kind of hardcover that, I just had a question, like, so is that required for an ADU? Does there have to be...
We're saying if they have a, yeah, if you have a, if you have some type of ADU, you should at least, the person should be able to get there on a sidewalk or some type of surface, not just walking across the grass. That's all it's trying to get to. And it can't just be to the driveway. It doesn't have to be to the street. So you, you know, it's just a matter, similar to what you have in a house. You have some type of paved structure from the street or from the driveway to the house. It's a similar approach. But it, does the wording make sense based on what I just said?
Yeah, I was just thinking through, like, uh, you know, this wouldn't even work in my yard, but I'm like, if it was in the back, could you have, like, you know, that, that broken-up stone? I wouldn't really call that...
Yeah, and this picture...
Hardcover, but it's accessible, or like, the porch.
I was thinking, because on the picture, you can see there's like a little sidewalk that goes from the door.
Yeah.
The, the stone, I think it was just the, I assume, that's actually the direct route. This is the, yeah. Yes. You don't have to have that. That's a suggestion just to make sure that they're accessible, especially since these, right now, the way that this is proposed, they could be rented out on a long-term basis, not short-term. But on a long-term basis, you could rent these. So making sure that we're providing quality, uh, places, dwelling units, if you're going to rent them.
Yeah, and every scenario kind of popped up in the code, so I didn't have any questions.
You said the max is 800 square feet?
Yes, unless your, unless your principal structure is smaller than that. Your footprint is smaller.
And so what's the minimum?
The minimum is what the building code would allow you to have.
Okay.
Which, I have looked up the number. It's, I, it's been a while. I, at one point, I looked up the number trying to figure out if you could tie it better, and the building code is not easy to tie all that.
I guess someone wanted to put a tiny house.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
It's not a full bath.
Not even 200 square feet.
It's probably around that number.
But...
But again, it's...
But that would be a movable object versus, this is...
Whatever the building code said is the minimum square feet, because they have certain standards for living space, kitchen, bathroom. As long as you have that, you could do a structure. But then you'd only be limited. Say that you only did it enough for one person, then that's the number of people you could have in it. You couldn't have two. So if you wanted two, you have to increase the size proportional to what the building code... It is small, I will state.
800, yeah.
No, I mean, if you do the building code minimum, it is small.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So on the bathroom, you said, um, tub and shower.
No, I said...
Or tub or shower.
Shower or tub.
Okay.
Yes. And that was the biggest clarification that the Planning Commission asked, because if you use full bathroom facilities, if you think of a full bathroom, that's a tub, but that's, we don't, we don't need to have a tub. So that's why I added that clarification.
So these have to be, like, on a foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Not, okay.
These are not...
Not a shad or...
Nope. No.
And they would have to meet, you know, if someone was going to rent it out, it would have to meet that whole other set of...
It has to meet building code requirements.
Yeah.
And that even means that if you wanted to say that you had a basement and you wanted to make it and rent it out and have an ADU, you have to put fireproofing between the two units, fireproof door. Like, there, there are things one would have to do to actually meet those requirements. It's not just simply locking the door and saying it is, if you want to meet what code requirements are.
Okay. She's looking at you.
Or only because he looked up at that time and it made me wonder, like, did he have a, I...
All right.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Solar. Again, we're going to amend kind of three areas. Uh, we're going to amend definitions with multiple definitions, and I have them in the presentation, but I'm not envisioning that I'm going to walk through each of those because you probably don't. But they're there, if we want to talk about them.
Good.
Again, the use tables, and then we're actually creating a new section because there's not really a place it belongs. So a new section, 129206, that has the actual standards. So the definitions that we need to add are what a building-integrated solar energy system is, what a ground-mounted solar energy system is. And I have pictures just to kind of add, and we do need to have a discussion about this one, so I'm going to come back. Roof-mounted solar energy system, solar access, and then uses. We are proposing that we would allow them in any district. Solar energy system, building-integrated or roof-mounted, anyplace. And then, a solar panel for like mechanical equipment, also anyplace. The one caveat I wanted to add is that in gathering pictures for this meeting, uh, the planning commission added the solar panel idea. And if you see the bottom pictures, uh, there's one with a boat lift, there's one with a security gate, there's one with a security light. You can see how small those are, those small little panels. And the planning commission really wanted those to be specifically allowed in the code because they think that they're reasonable. And those could be construed to be ground-mounted. So, I wrote the definition that said, you can have a solar panel for a security light, gate, boat lift. And they, at the time, they talked about pool heater, and I added it. Then, when I went to get the photo, you can see the photo in the middle, um, on the right-hand side. You can see how many solar panels that are, that is. And I actually looked it up, and it says that you need to have anywhere from fifty to a hundred percent of the size, surface area of a pool in panels. And I didn't think that's what the planning commission was going for. So, my recommendation is we make an amendment to the ordinance to take out the cooler heater reference. Because my understanding is we were never going for that array that was being shown.
Is there a size thing that would be attached to that then? Like, for a gate or a boat launch, it's like, it's so big, you know, like...
We could do that. I just figured those, all the pictures I saw on those were the, the, the size that we all anticipate.
Sure.
Cooler heater clearly takes a lot more power to heat pool. So, we do need to make that adjustment. I apologize that I didn't look up the picture before. I, I guess I assumed erroneously that they were all small. But it's kind of an interesting find, so, yes.
With the one on the top right?
Yes.
Like...
Those are the ones we're not allowing, just to make sure we're clear. Sorry, I didn't, so, we define what a ground-mounted is, so that we can say that they're not allowed. And the pictures on the top, the first two, the first two would not be allowed.
Okay.
Uh, we are allowing roof, those kinds.
Yeah.
But we have to define it in order to not allow it. Otherwise, it's hard to not allow something that we don't have defined. Uh, let's see, definitions. Uh, so, in terms of actual standards, uh, we say that they can be allowed on both principal or accessory buildings. Um, this is where we say that no ground-mounted solar energy systems are allowed other than for things like a light or a security camera, boat lift. Uh, we specifically here say that you can't have a solar lot parking shade structure, which is the pictures I pulled, because that was my understanding from our conversation, is we didn't want to go there. Um, and then, you can have a building-integrated one, like, like in a roof. Uh, in terms of standards, we just have a couple for the roof-mounted. We want to make sure it doesn't get too tall off the roof. We want to make sure they're flush. If you do have a flat roof, you do need to tilt them. So, we have a provision that allows them to be tilted, but not too much. Uh, and then, we want them to not extend around the perimeter of buildings. You can find photos where the solar panels like go past the edge of the eaves. And that's not an aesthetic I think we wanted, so that's why that provision is in there. And then, we do have a statement that talks about removing it and that you just have, you have to remove it, including the equipment, if it's non-functional, non-operational. So, those are the standards that we discussed with the planning commission. As I kind of highlighted, the biggest changes from the planning commission for this topic, I think, were related to the smaller solar panels we just discussed. Um, and then, they clarified some language on removal. They really wanted to make sure it was clear, uh, that they, they had to be removed and you couldn't just have a obsolete, uh, system. Uh, and those are the, kind of their two focuses. Any questions on solar?
Any questions? No.
All right, and then EV chargers. Uh, again, we're adding changes to the definitions, updating the use tables, and then, we, again, creating a new section that has some standards. Relative to definitions, uh, we have charging levels that follow the typical terminology that is being used today, one, two, and three. Uh, we have electric vehicle, electric vehicle charging station being defined, electric vehicle infrastructure, and electrical, electric vehicle service equipment. So, all the basic definitions we need, uh, because we refer to them later in, uh, the code. Uh, we are allowing them in every district, uh, both in residential and commercial districts. Uh, in terms of standards, uh, we specifically say that you can have that equipment serving a single-family, two-family, or twin home, but they have to be in the garage or on an exterior wall or on a freestanding pole adjacent to the parking space. So, providing them, uh, in that way for those types of uses. And then, when we move on to residential structures with three or more units or non-residential structures, uh, some of the design standards we have have to do with complying with building code, making sure that they are ADA compliant, making sure that they're not causing a trip hazard. Um, cores are retractable, those types of elements. Uh, they can be located against, uh, next to designated parking spaces in a garage or a park, a parking lot, just making sure that the clearance works. Uh, and then, we have the idea of having a bollard or some type of way that they're not damaged over time. Uh, because we know that damaged equipment probably is harder to replace and people aren't going to want to do that. Uh, we, it was recommended, uh, that their signage be included. Um, and that signage would be available, it could point to two different spaces. But they did want to have signage just so people knew, um, that it was for electric vehicle itself. Uh, lighting, the planning commission didn't want the lighting to be provided anytime they're installed. We had had just a reference that said if they were going to be used at night, you'd have lighting, but the planning commission felt, no matter what, you should have lighting on these. Uh, and then, there was a little bit of tweaking about maintenance. Again, the idea that it's functional, that it's removed, uh, if it's not in use. There weren't a lot of other changes with the planning commission. I do want to circle back just to make sure it's clear, both with solar panels and with electric vehicle charging. In neither case, we're requiring those. Uh, we're just making them more clear that they are allowed and if they, someone wants to do it, providing some standards for it. So, uh, that was the discussion we had back in March, I think it was. Planning commission confirmed that at this point, we're moving towards just allowing these in the community and then, we can obviously make changes into the future. Planning commission considered this at their meeting, and they did recommend approval, and we've incorporated their recommendations into the ordinance that you have in front of you. Um, I do want to remind you that this is a public hearing, so we do need to hold a public hearing and solicit any comments. Uh, we do have a couple of, of housekeeping things I want to talk about. Uh, hopefully, you would adopt the proposed ordinance amendments. I do want to make the change, uh, to the solar. Um, I think that change can be adopting the ordinance and removing any reference to pool heaters. And then, I can just remove them wherever they're referenced. We don't have to cite each section. Um, the other element is the passing the resolutions. We did include in your packet resolutions, uh, and that's for the publication of the ordinances by title and summary. Uh, state statute requires that resolution to be passed by four members of the council, since there are only three members this evening.
You can't vote.
There are two element, two ways that we can approach it. Uh, and one approach is that the city just publishes them in their entirety, which is allowed. Uh, it costs a little bit more, but then, we would be finished. So, if you did pass it, we could move forward with it. The other option would be to, um, table the resolutions to next meeting and have them adopted then. I think staff's preference, though obviously whatever you would like, would be to just move it, to have you adopt them if you're comfortable and us publish them in their entirety, just so we can all be finished and there isn't confusion because title by summary is confusing anyway. So, to wait a month is a little bit confusing. Uh, but obviously, whatever action you want to take, and I can explain it more fully. But we do have in your packet both the ordinance followed by a resolution. So, if you took staff's suggestion that maybe we just pass the ordinance, we don't have to do anything with the resolutions that are in the packet if we're going to publish them in their entirety. So, hopefully, that made sense? I can definitely further clarify that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For these, is there a permit process?
There is a, the typical permit process that anyone would have to do, um, related. So, electrical permit, if you have solar, those types of. And accessory dwelling, it would have a normal building permit.
Okay.
So, all the typical permitting processes would be in place.
Okay.
So, if we do the public hearing and we table it, we have to do a public hearing next time anyway?
No, you would table it to the next meeting.
I still have to do another public hearing then?
No, you would, you can close the public hearing and say we're going to table action to the next meeting if you would like.
But I'm saying, are we going to do two public hearings?
No, the...
If we table it?
No, if you, well, this suggests, depends on how you want to handle it. If you're comfortable passing the ordinance this evening, you could pass that this evening. And then, you would table the resolutions, which aren't related to the public hearing, and put them on, you know, table them to the next meeting and then, you could vote on them on the consent agenda, for example, and they could all be passed.
So, should we discuss what to do first, or do the public hearing first?
I guess that's up to you. I think, I...
I would say public hearing first.
Do the public hearing first, yeah. Okay, all right, well, we'll do that then.
Perfect.
All right, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing. If anybody wants to come up and give your opinion on any of this stuff, come on up. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, so, do we feel comfortable if we all agree on this? Uh, do you want to move forward, or do you want to push it a month?
I would prefer to not table anything. I mean, we have, uh, like the notices and everything went out. And if no one is here to speak about it tonight, I mean, it's already been well thought out through the planning commission and planning commission passed them all three, and city staff and everything. I mean, I don't feel the need to, I guess, really table it or, you know, put it off. I mean, I don't know, I would feel comfortable moving forward with, with all of it personally.
Okay, Councilor, do you?
Well, we can't move forward with all of it because we have to have four votes.
We, we can.
You can adopt the ordinances and then, we'll just publish them in the paper and then, it'll be all adopted.
And just reconsider agenda next time. I would go for that.
I, I, I would say you don't have to, you can adopt the ordinance tonight, and you don't have to adopt the resolution. You can publish it in full. The only purpose for the resolution is if you want to have a summary publication, which all it does is reduce publication costs.
So, I guess I'm just confused then. So, for each, there's two resolutions for each of the three items?
There's actually an ordinance and a resolution, just to note that, right?
For each?
Each one has an ordinance, which is the one you need to adopt, and then, a resolution which would allow title by summary. And what staff talked about is the amount of effort it would take to put them in the consent agenda and prepare stuff. It probably just makes sense to publish them and...
So, I guess my question was like, can we, we make motions for all of those each separately? Or like, what, what are we asking to, to table or not table? I guess, then I'm confused.
I think with the action, in, in my opinion, the attorney obviously needs to adjust if I'm not right. But I would ask that we adopt each one individually, just so we know if there's not agreement, because sometimes that happens. And then, the resolutions, we can just bypass and we don't have to take any action one way or the other about them.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Correct. I, I would, I would suggest that since each ordinance is a separate ordinance, that you could need to have a motion, you know, and adoption of, or enactment of each ordinance. And it, whether or not you, and that, that, that ord, the adoption of the ordinance itself is completely separate from how you're going to meet the requirement of publication. That's, and that's what the resolution is about, and whether or not you want to wait or just go ahead and get it published. But remembering that if you wait two weeks, that's, that's more time before it becomes effective.
All right, so we should just go down the list and do motions for each of them?
Starting on, yes, page two, twenty-six oh seven.
Okay. All right, who wants to go?
Two six oh seven, okay.
Or you could just do it off the agenda here.
Maybe I can read this one, let's see if I can get it. Okay, I'll make a motion for the adoption of ordinance, um, amending chapter one twenty-nine of the Mound City Code regarding zoning to allow for the establishing regulations for accessible, accessory dwelling units, ADUs.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Next.
May I make one comment before that ordinance? I apologize, but this is the one that I would like you to make a motion adopting it with the change that we remove any reference to, um, pool heaters. So, then, I can go through and strip that from the references.
Is that twenty-six oh nine, or that's the next one?
Twenty-six ten.
Twenty-six ten, sorry, I was already past twenty-six oh nine, but you're right, that's the resolution.
So, we did two six oh seven first, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Two six oh nine is the resolution by summary. You do, you do not have to do that.
We don't have to do that one?
No.
No, we go to twenty-six oh ten.
Oh, duh, okay, so we're going to, okay.
We just drain the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, so then, someone say that and then, remove the pool heater.
Yes.
You want to get that one?
Yeah, twenty-six ten, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance amending City Code, chapter one twenty-nine, zoning to allow for and establish, uh, standards for solar energy systems um, with the modification of, um, removing the pool heater.
References to pool heaters.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. Now, we're twenty-six fourteen?
Yeah, okay, so, I make a motion to, uh, for an ordinance, uh, amending chapter one twenty-nine of the Mound City Code regarding zoning to allow the establishing, uh, regulations for electrical vehicle charging.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. And then, is that it for...
Yes.
Yeah.
The resolutions will be published?
No, the resolutions, there's no action on the resolutions. The ordinances, ordinances themselves will be published.
Okay.
And that'll be taken care of by staff.
Yeah, okay, and we're good with that?
Good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then, the resolutions will be on our agenda next time?
Nope, um, we don't need, you don't need the resolutions at all.
We don't need to do it all?
Because they're published.
Yeah, it's ju, it's just a matter of how do you meet the publication requirement? You still can meet it by having the full ordinance in there. And these aren't that lengthy, um, for publication.
Yeah.
Cool, all right, thank you for that.
I could sit down, but I'm on the next one.
Yeah, you're on the next one.
I'm the next two, so, if it's okay.
All right, that's my number seven council introduction for two-lot subdivision of property at sixty-two hundred West Edge Boulevard from Bruce Stillman, who is the property owner.
Aye, again, uh, good evening. Uh, again, this is a concept introduction. We've had those a few times this year since you have adopted the policy. Uh, so, the concept introduction is an opportunity for you to learn about a proposed subdivision, provide any feedback to the applicants. Uh, Bruce Stillman is here to present his concept. Uh, as you know, staff does not provide any feedback or commentary at this point in the process. Uh, we're just the, kind of the handlers to kind of get this to the, through the process. Uh, the property is at sixty-two hundred West Edge Boulevard, and he would like to divide it into two lots. Uh, there's an attached concept plan, which I will, um, move to in the packet material, so it's on the screen. Uh, the existing home with the detached garage would be reconstructed and there'd be a new home on the north side of the lot. Uh, there were a couple of things that is different. Oftentimes, we don't receive that, but we did receive comments, um, so we did want to note a couple of those comments. The attached letter from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District was included and that, they don't have specific concerns, but they did want to note that there may be thresholds that trigger their rules and permitting. Uh, so, we just wanted to note that. We did distribute this as is customary to all of our agency partners, uh, as well as anybody within three hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the council policy does say that you'll hear a council, an introduction from the property owner, um, that members of the public may be here to speak as well and provide feedback. Uh, with that, I am going to just advance it and the applicant can come forward and have the presentation to you.
All right, thank you. All right, Bruce, you want to come up? Hey, can you give us your name and address?
Uh, do you want my residence that I live, or the address of the property?
Uh, where you live, yeah.
Okay, uh, Bruce Stillman, seven, seven, one, one, zero, County Road, one, ten, extension, Minnetrista.
All right.
Also, some people might, might know it as Big Stone Mini Golf and Sculpture Garden.
Nice.
I live on the property. And I don't, my notes, I can hardly see. I'm doing my best, I've had a...
You want to use my magnifier?
So, it's almost a one and a half acre lot, and I'm a nature lover. And my vision is to divide it into two lots. One of them is a little larger than the other one. The one that has the house is the smaller one that houses was built in nineteen thirty-five with a lot of additions, it's in pretty bad shape. And and the best thing to do would be tear it down and do one of my creative architectural designs is what I like to do. I'm kind of more into creating an interesting design than trying to make it a a money-making type of, you know, property developer. So the driveway entrance idea, there's one driveway going to the house that exists, but to use that same driveway entrance for parcel A and just kind of fork it off. It makes a lot of sense to me not to add any more open curb the way it is on the street. And there would just be probably owned by parcel A, that portion that parcel B would need. But there would, you know, the legal people can write up the, what do you call it? Where you can use the property.
Right.
Easement rights, you know, all the easement rights and, um, let's see, what else can I add? The idea for the the new lot is a creator, a real creative home. I'd like to bring in some clean fill. There's a little issue with the hundred-year-old floodplain. And that is just a grass plain, and there's some very big mature trees right in this area. And I could, I or the lots meet, I could cut out, you know, if you can replace it with what you're taking away. It could be done, but with the Minnehaha watershed, I could try to chalk them into just, if I could add in some dirt on one side and not disturb along the shoreline. They would go for that, as my initial would want to do, but if I had to take away, that can be done. I'd like to do a creative landscape right up to the street. And I brought up with the city, not really formally, but I kind of complained about these arrow signs that are right in front of the property that were never there for fifteen years, and they kind of showed up after the met council and in a brief discussion, they said it was a DOT recommendation, and I I feel like recommendation doesn't mean you have to do it. And I think a nice attractive landscape is more preferred than the signs. If something had to be there, it could be just one of those point signs right above the mailbox. And that would give the area to design a nice landscape. I've talked to just a few neighbors, and they agree with me that they call, you know, one neighbor called it sign pollution, and I agree with that statement, I kind of like that statement. Um, so, you know, I'd like to have further discussions to see something like that could be changed. So they couldn't, it would affect the energy I'd put into the project, it would kind of change my energy. And my idea is kind of a very creative vision. I don't know, I'm an artist, so, uh, that's all I can say about that one. Uh, let's see, this, my idea is to build two houses thinking that they would be less than three thousand square foot houses, you know, nothing real big. Kind of the Rambler style is what I like. And my daughter used to live in that house, and she moved to Colorado, and now she is expressing interest in helping with Big Stone Mini Golf, getting older. So my idea is she could choose one of the other properties, and the other one might be just sort of a spec home, uh, that I would end up selling. But, you know, kind of work the landscape together. I think I covered everything. So if there's any questions?
Okay, does council have any questions?
No.
It, you know, I guess one other thing I could say, you know, the lots are kind of follow the pattern of everything along the lake, they're they're big lots, you know, they're like twice as big as the minimum and and technically I could probably make three lots, but I want to do a quality lot. So, you know, this would kind of keep it this way for a long time. And do a nice improvement for mound.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I mean, it sounds like it makes sense to me, but it's the next step would be like the details for planning and
Yeah.
See it again anyway, so.
Councilor, if you.
No, I, the site, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to go and see your site, but I will see it before you come back. And I like the idea that you're thinking creatively and artistically. And from what I can see the site plan, there's lots of opportunity there, I don't have any technical questions until we start seeing your design.
Yeah, I invite all council members, go take a look.
But I do want to talk to you about something else.
Constructed a little bit of a design for lot B to get to the lake other than a steep staircase, but it's, and I use all natural stone, and when I have to do retaining wall or anything like that, I don't use any of the cement block Home Depot things, I I I'm just kind of a nature lover and I kind of work that way.
I know you're talking about building for your daughter potentially and yourself, but I'd like you to think about considering, um, being age-friendly in your design.
Yeah, that's the Rambler.
That's a beginning with the Rambler, yeah.
Yeah. That's, uh, you know, I want to live in my house, you know. Which I don't want to choose, you know.
So I'm your, uh, your lake neighbor, as you know, right around the corner from you.
Your neighbor?
Yeah, well, we talked on the phone the other day.
I, I got too many things going on, but.
Um, no, I'm right around the corner here, but side, I know exactly what you're talking about, and and yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You know, I, I, there was a house on Cardinal fifteen years ago, I, you know, I bought the house for twenty-five thousand and remodeled it, and back then I had a crew, we worked on the mini golf during the summer, in the winter we needed something to do, so I kind of went and found the cheapest house in mound, and we kind of renovated. There's one on Cardinal Lane, and there's one on Cardinal Boulevard, and and the ADU part was interesting, because I, just today I started an ADU in Thailand.
Oh.
Yeah, on a property, so, and it's my second one I've done there, so.
Nice. So the the only thing I'd say with about that sign, you know, the arrows? Is, you know, I know we emailed you back about kind of the answer that we had on that from our engineer, uh, Public Works.
Yeah, and the DOT recommendation part.
Yeah, kind of what we went with, so like you said, you don't want to spend a lot of money if you're gonna have these big arrows in your yard. I agree, it sucks to have them there, but at the same point, they're necessary from what we looked up with our engineers, so.
I like to argue with the engineer.
No, I, a hundred percent, I'd let you argue with our city manager off camera here.
With him on, on, if we could just put a point there, the arrow.
So.
I think speeds up traffic, and that's, when I talked to the neighbors, that was the biggest complaint, was how fast traffic is going on.
So I might be part of the problem of how they got there originally, because I did get complaints, and I do live around the corner.
Okay.
And, you know, we originally, a couple of years ago, we put that, was it fifteen miles per hour?
Oh, the arrow point?
Yeah, and then, you know, I don't know when the arrows came, if that was part of it or not, but um, we were getting complaints, and that was part of the solution was we needed to notify people that, you know, here's, you got this thing coming up, especially at night, you know, when you're cur- it's a quick curve, you know. So you can't go more than ten to fifteen miles an hour, you know, or you're rolling your car. Now, the arrows in the middle of the night, you can, you know, are helpful. Again, per per Jesse and our engineer, I I think work with them offline here, but can we do something less aggressive?
Just to point over the miloxes at my.
Yeah.
The push, the other thing I would add is, from my property all the way to Minnetrista, adding a sidewalk on the water treatment side of the street. I've talked to a few of the neighbors too, that have to just walk and bike on the street, and just to get off the street would be a nice, uh, simple addition, I think, for the neighborhood. And once you get to Minnetrista, they have a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street.
Right.
That gets to the bike trail. That was just an idea.
Yeah, I, I echo it, I, well, that's, I walk around the lake that way, that's.
I go to the property from bike trail all the time, and, you know, my six-year-old daughter, and we get worried.
If you want to.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to add that, if you recall, when we did the West Edge project in twenty-eighteen?
Yeah.
The neighbors petitioned out a proposed trail in that neighborhood, so there was one in the plan, and we were asked to.
Oh, there you go.
It was pretty invasive though, an eight-foot wide, four feet from the street, that took up twelve feet. And I think you could just do four or five feet right along the street, and on the water treatment side, no one would that portion of it, no one would think, would complain about it.
Well, maybe, again, maybe talk to Jesse, we can work on something else.
Express the new idea to him. Another time, but.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, and we're gonna have a public comment here. And then we might have you come back up, depending on what happens here. All right, so I'm gonna open a public comment period, if anybody wants to come up and talk about that.
Repose.
All right, I'm gonna close it. Do you guys have any other suggestions or comments or any?
No.
All right, so you're, again, your next step would just be, uh, go through the planning department, so.
Applications for a formal subdivision. So that requires additional information beyond what we see on the sketchback. I will.
Yeah, so work with Sarah and Jesse, and they'll get you squared on that. All right, thank you. Okay, number eight, we're going to considerations slash actions, major subdivision final plat of Lake Minnetonka flats. And three requested actions.
All right, uh, good evening, this is a final plat request for the property at twenty-four hundred and twenty-four twenty Commerce Boulevard, the Lake Minnetonka flat. Um, I'm sure you recall, in September twenty-fourth, uh, there was a council meeting to approve the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit for the Lake Minnetonka flats. The proposed development is twelve for sale units in in three buildings, each building has four units. And then there's a proposed shared HOA dock arrangement with the adjacent property. Uh, the requests before you this evening are three separate ones, uh, they are three separate actions, a major subdivision final plat, uh, the developers' agreement, and then the early start agreement. Just for everybody's reference, uh, here, the property is located on the eastern side of Commerce Boulevard between Auditors Road and Bartlett Boulevard, next to Lost Lake. Um, and it's a seven-point-nine acre site, though most of it is actually wetland, uh, and not upland and cannot be built on. Um, the plat is combining two existing parcels together to create a single lot, and then it's anticipated um, that at a later date, there'll be a common interest community plat for the proposed condominiums. These are individually owner-occupied condominiums that will be developed on this site. Uh, so the final plat is a seven-point-nine acre flat, it's called Lot Lot Block One, Lake Minnetonka Flat. A couple of comments, we did distribute this in our normal channels to adjacent, uh, or to agencies and partners. We did receive word that the Minnehaha Creek watershed district approved this project at their October tenth meeting. Uh, we also responded, uh, heard a response from Hennepin County Transportation that they didn't have any new comments, they just asked that the applicant uh, implement the comments that they had at the preliminary plat stage. The discussion this evening, uh, again, is for the major subdivision final plat, developers' agreement and early start agreement. Uh, these are all typical elements that we have, especially with projects like this and the time of year that we are at. Uh, so the developers' agreement would outline all of the public improvements and private improvements and expectations uh, and financing, um, and deadlines that the applicant would have. The early start agreement would allow them to start work before all of the final plat resolution, or the final plat is complete, property is acquired, uh, the resolutions are adopted. Um, we have reviewed them with the city attorney and the applicant's attorney. Um, so those are, uh, they have been reviewed and they are ready for your consideration. I think the only last comment I want to make is that the way, uh, final plats are, they are actually the final action that you would take. And generally, uh, state statute requirements are if the final plat is in general conformance with the preliminary plat, then we need to move forward, uh, this isn't the time that we can revisit elements of the preliminary plat. Uh, and so I just wanted to make that comment of what a final plat is, uh, in case there's some confusion, because we don't, we haven't seen one for a while. Um, so it's exciting that we we have a new project. I can answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are here and able to answer any questions you may have as well. And obviously, the city attorney has been instrumental in all of the documents in front of you and can provide much more technical information than I can on the whys of the legal part of it.
All right, does council have any questions for Rita?
I don't think so, not yet.
Okay. All right, so we have actions, unless anybody wants to talk to the applicants or that?
No, unless, I mean, do we get, I don't know if they have anything in particular that they want to say, but I don't have any questions.
This is pretty standard, moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead, uh, if someone wants to make a motion, page twenty-six thirty-two? So we are just going to make three separately in order?
Yeah. Uh, and I should, I should note, if we're gonna go down that, we're gonna approve the resolutions that are there. With regard to the development agreement, um, it's approved, and you can see the resolution, the resolution is subject to some, basically, I can continue working on it to get to the final form. One of the items that's missing at this point, we're waiting for from the developers' engineers, is engineers' estimates on the improvements, because there's a blank for the amount of the letter of credit they need to provide. That'll be, um, that'll be worked out. But, and also, there are some other minor changes that we're making, but that are immaterial. And also, so both dot, both agreements in there have the ability to have some have some changes, but the substance will be the same.
Yeah.
Um, the development agreement itself would be released and recorded with the final plat, so that will come later on. But, um, and the, as stated, the early start agreement allows them to do some grading, site removal grading, and some footings before they, um, get the plat recorded.
Okay.
So, if I didn't know if there are any, I had any questions, there's obviously three resolutions.
Yeah. Okay. Twenty-six thirty-two?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve resolution approving major subdivision final plat of Lake Minnetonka flats.
We got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, that passes. Next.
I can do it. Um, I would like to make a motion approving resolution approving development agreement for Lake Minnetonka flats.
Okay, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, so that passes. And last one?
Where's the last one?
I can keep going if you want.
Twenty-six sixty-nine.
I will make the last resolution approving early start agreement for Lake Minnetonka flats.
Okay, got a motion? And a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, that passes. All right, and then number nine, we got Harrison Bay Association Cardinal Lane.
Thank you again, you guys.
Yeah, see you guys, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, welcome.
Good evening.
Can you give us your name and address?
Sherri Wallace, two-one-three-five Overland Lane. Nice to see you all.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to come and, um, and talk about where we're at, would you mind?
Yeah, it's true.
Wanted to update you on our progress and what we're working on and get some approval from you. Okay, next lot. So just a reminder of our goals, um, our goals were to lever to twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, two to three rain gardens, which it will end up being two rain gardens, team with the city, um, implement some kind of pre-treatment solution to remove sediment, um, install these within a two-year period, and engage residents. And through, um, educational workshops, enhanced website, that kind of thing. So that's just to remind you about what our goals were. And the Cardinal Lane issues, another reminder, you guys have heard this before, right? Um, shoreline erosion, uh, significant street sediment, and little opportunity for infiltration. So what have we done? So, um, based on our June, um, council meeting, um, you agreed that we could consult with the city engineers. Um, and we met with, um, Matt and Bob Bean and Ryan at the actual lot, we walked through the plan, the site plan. Um, and one of the things that we're doing is we're changing the pre-treatment method. So originally, we talked about having a sump to collect all the sediment. Um, and, um, Bob Bean actually recommended that we use a snow garden. And it's a, um, and you can see here, um, this, it's a little depression at the end of the road, so it's this, this one right here, I don't know, is there a light? It's the only guy I could use to point. Versus getting up there with my finger. Um, so that little area there is what's called a snow garden, is where the snow gets pushed um, in the winter and stored over the winter. It's a natural area of runoff there, where the end of the street kind of, it slopes a little bit. So other sediment from the street will, will sit there. And so, um, Bob said that there are other areas using this kind of pre-treatment. Um, so you've got, you've got the snow garden here, and then that will naturally be graded, so it will run off, any water will run from here into the first rain garden, which will then cascade down to the second rain garden if it gets full. And then out and into the lake. So we modified the plan, and, um, Fulton Bank has approved it, given us the thumbs up on the new plan. the new plan. We just got the signed copy today from the engineer that they were requiring. Since the plan was created, the diseased trees and scrub trees have been removed from the lot. So I don't know if any of you have driven by there, but there's nothing left. I mean, literally, almost all the trees were removed for reasons of disease. So it's very, very wide open. Very large tree removed over here. And we did locate all of the end of street boundaries. So in addition, as you all have approved, is the addition of riprap here at the shoreline. And so RFPs went out, I believe Kevin has gotten a couple of quotes on that.
Yeah, he's actually already approved one of them, so we're moving forward.
Is it concept?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I can't find.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah. He did, oh, he did, okay. So, Concept Landscaping is going to do the riprap and have that completed by the end of the year in order to use the extra funds from the dock commission budget. I'm saying that correctly, right?
Yeah.
So we are thrilled about that and happy that we're going to be stopping the erosion here. And one of the things we talked with the engineers about is that within the plan, they've added this reinforced basin overflow area to make sure that with all the runoff that's coming from Cardinal Lane, that that's not going to seep behind the riprap. So I believe the plan is for Concept to consult with the city engineers to make sure that it is done per plan, as far as that's concerned. So, any questions on our design here? HBA does plan that with the money to create the rain gardens here, our plan is to actually, we're going to change the current walkway. We're going to push it over to the left in the plan, and we are going to make it a grass walkway. And the reason for that is the maintenance of it. Right now, with the current paving, the weeds that were coming up through there were not realistic to maintain. So by putting a grass walkway here and, and elevating the flow so that it, the walkway is not getting the water, the rain gardens are getting the water, it should help with the muddy areas that we've had in that area. Any questions on that?
Any question?
No? Okay.
Great.
Okay, next slide. So our current cost estimates are for excavation prep and prep of the rain garden, we have a quote for $16,200. And Bob Bean was like, this project is like a $60,000, $80,000 project. Well, it's not going to be that much, so thank goodness. We have talked with Ryan about using city truck and labor to transport the excavated rock and vegetation. So when the, when the contractor comes in, he's got to move all that rock out that's currently there. Ryan and his team will provide a city truck and the place to dispose of that rock. So we're asking for approval of that, time and energy, obviously. We are planning almost $5,000 in plants and tree replacement for the site. And then again, the dock commission budget is covering the cost of the riprap, which is somewhere low, like.
It was about, yeah, about $8,000. $7,900.
So it'll be under budget, I think, under the $15,000. So the current funding needed by HBA and the Good Sewer Grant and any external funding is $20,950. We currently have $11,000 left over, and so we have a shortfall. And, and we have a plan for dealing with the shortfall. So if you could go to the next slide, I think it talks about what our plan. Oh, this, the next slide, I'll talk on the next one. Oh, go back. So this is just to talk about the ongoing maintenance and who's going to be doing it. So the snow garden is going to require maintenance. With all the sediment in that depression, that we need to maintain a depression. And so based on the conversation with the engineers, that would become the city responsibility to make sure that periodically that sediment is taken out and that area is reseeded with a salt tolerant grass of some sort. The watering of newly planted shrubs and trees will work that out between your team and the residents to make sure that everything is getting the proper water after it's planted. And then mowing the grass walkways will be the residents. And then any maintenance and upkeep of the rain garden will obviously be the residents' responsibility. They've already signed a contract on that. Okay. Education. I just wanted to share with you our education goals. We have completed the enhanced website on our Harrison's Bay. We will have onsite signage on the, on the new Cardinal Lane that will talk about the rain garden and the sponsorship of the rain garden. And then we, our hands-on educational workshops, on May 18th, we had a learning and planting event on Apple Lane. One of, a secondary goal is we have engaged the West Haka High School Environmental Club. Julie Weisenhorn met with them on Monday, and they are very excited about being part of the process from kind of start to finish. And, and then thirdly, I believe we are looking at doing a community ed class that will follow the creation of the rain garden. Okay, next slide. So our timeline, so this will, we'll talk about the funding. On October 9th, we made a presentation to the Lions Club regarding our funding deficit. The feedback I've gotten from that is that they will likely donate to us. Right now, our deficit is about $9,500. And I do have a, I do have a copy of the brochure that we presented them, if you're interested in a copy, I can share that with you. We will not know from them until January 15th whether or not they are going to give us money. But the indication is that they will give us some money, it's just, we don't know how much they will give us. But I did, so in fall of 2024, obviously, we've already completed this, which was to select the vendor, and now we just have to install the riprap. And then January 23rd is the deadline for Hennepin County Good Sewer Grant. And I have talked to our Hennepin County grant administrators, and they said, based on the information and complexity of the site, that we could go back and request additional funds if they're needed. So the deadline is the 23rd, we'll know from the Lions on the 15th. So I feel pretty confident that we will be able to come up with the funds we need to proceed. And then spring 2025, I mean, hopefully in May, depending on funding, we'll be able to start construction. Do I have any more slides, or is that it?
That's it.
So, any, any questions about where we're at? I think at this point, I'm really requesting approval for the permit. I gave it to Sarah.
I have it now.
Oh, you have it. I filled out the permit for the land use permit. I'm asking for the council to waive the $200 fee for that permit. And with that, I think we're, I think we're done, right, with the council?
Yeah. Does council have any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you all for your work on it.
Oh, and I did, I did find out that our permit or our grant extends through 2025. So we did not have to request an extension.
Awesome.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you on your relentless pursuit of this project.
I stuck to it, didn't I?
You did. You did. And it's such a wonderful example. I was thinking, we should submit this story to the League of Cities as an, as an excellent partnership of, you know, community folks being committed and sticking to it and forming the partnership and the way we've, you've been able to interweave city staff and city monies and others.
Yeah.
And civic groups. I think it's really a good story for the League of Cities.
And we'll take lots of pictures throughout the construction.
And plus, you've got the kids in there, too. That's great.
Yes, yes. We're really excited about that part of it.
Do you want to say anything, Kestrel?
No, just thank you again. I haven't said it enough already. Yeah. It's going to look, it's going to look great.
I'd echo that, and I'm glad that we could figure out a way through the dock program to help you out a little bit. And I think that was kind of the, probably the answer that we shouldn't have gave you a long time ago, so we apologize.
Well, remember, it is your land, right? Just want to clarify, it is your land.
We're pulling from, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, congrats and.
The dock program is being used for what it's for.
Yeah. That's right.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I feel really good about it, so I'm glad that you guys kept pushing. Good job. We'll see you with the next one.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to do an approval?
We need to make and waive the fee.
We got to do a motion to staff?
I was looking, I mean, it says right on here that the fee only applies if there's no public benefit, so I guess I would assume that if you all agree that there is a public benefit here, then I wouldn't even worry about the fee.
Oh.
I don't think it needs to be waived technically, but.
Oh, great.
So then, sorry, we have to make a motion.
Do we have to make a motion to, that we're okay with the concepts and?
I think at this point, unless, I'm guessing, we'll have to enter into some sort of agreement with the watershed, right?
The watershed will have a maintenance.
Of course, we already adopted a sort of a overall thing.
Yeah, that was intended to replace that, but I think this needs to get listed in.
So you may end up needing to approve some sort of amendment to our watershed agreement, but I don't think here.
Yeah. Okay. Like a future consent item or something like that.
Yeah.
All right. And I think that as long as, you don't need to vote on it, but as long as there's a consensus that it's, you know, that the fee can be waived, you know, based on that.
Yeah, we're all in agreement.
Consensus made.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We got number 10, 2025 Street Reconstruction Project and 2025 Mill and Overlay Project Authorization. Hey, I haven't seen you in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council that are here today. Brian Simmons, Consulting City Engineer. It has been a little while. It's good to be up in front of you. Couple of things in the council packet for you tonight. This is the, the portion of my cycle, mine and Matt's, where we look at projects for next year. And the requests that are in front of you are all requests to authorize studies, as, you know, but I'll state again for everybody watching at home, and so it's a matter of the record. These are projects that are all in the capital improvement plan, that we have been planning to do. But obviously, the, the cost estimates that we have used to prepare the capital improvement plan are, for the most part, placeholders that don't include all of the project details or up-to-date pricing and those kind of things. We, we do as good as we can, but we need to learn a few more things about most of the projects. And so in the course of maintaining the streets, you may have heard me say at this podium before that we are not done, because I know I've heard that uttered in this room before. But now we shift into a different mindset that we are doing maintenance. That's perfect, Jesse, just leave it right there. So, you know, the oldest of the streets that we constructed or reconstructed in the pavement management plan, you know, that started in 2003, are now getting close to being 20 years old. And, and this curve shows how we want to maintain the health of those streets. So the red falling off is obviously if we just do nothing. We place that pavement once, and then we let it go until its eventual failure. We're not going to do that. What we're going to do is we're going to do different types of maintenance, mill and overlay. You know, the crack seal and seal coating is one of those maintenance activities, but those things are all intended to keep the pavement, you know, watertight, keep it nice and driving nice and smooth, keep it so that, that flexible asphalt mat, I guess, except for Island View Drive where we have a little bit of concrete, but everything else is flexible asphalt, is, is a whole piece of pavement. And so performing those activities bumps the curve back up again. We sort of reset ourselves and, you know, we get another 10, 20 years, depending upon what types of activities we are talking about. So, Jesse, would you scroll to the map or maps? Because the, the proposed project for 2025 includes a combination of some reconstruction of a couple of streets that were not fully reconstructed. I don't know if, if you guys have talked in detail about, if we think we know exactly what was done out here, but these streets are needing to be reconstructed at this point. And then the second map, this is that Sugar Bush area, these are going to be receiving mill and overlay.
So, and if you're getting there, I'm not trying to jump ahead, but the, the blue on the previous, is that like full reconstruction or like what, what does it mean? That if the mill and overlay is, but the blue?
When we, when we say reconstruction, we're going to, we're going to take it all the way down, pass the pavement into the matrix below. If there is not sufficient gravel there, we have to go down to that and sort of start over. When I say full reconstruction, we're going to look at the curb, and we will do spot replacements of curb, but we're not doing wholesale replacement of curb.
Okay.
But we will do some geotech to see what is below that in terms of, you know, is there gravel down there, you know? Or is there enough for us to just simply put more asphalt on top of it, or do we need to scrape it all the way down, build it back up?
Yeah, so I guess I mean for anyone listening, watching, that's going to be, that's where I live. I mean, like if they're, just to clarify, it's like the blue, it's spot replacement of curb and sidewalk, and then the street going all the way down to the gravel, and then redoing.
New pavement.
Okay.
New pavement with the things around it getting touched, addressed, you know, not, not wholesale replacement where it doesn't need it. But we need to make sure that we have a, you know, solid curb line to carry stormwater, hold the pavement in, all of those things. We want to maintain the infrastructure that's there to the extent possible. We're not going to make any change, major changes in grade. Actually, I should say we, we may make some minor ones, but reusing the existing curb, you know, all of that already flows, unless there are bird baths or things that we discover, you know, areas that are ponding water that's bad while we're working on the study and those things, then we will strive to correct those when we reconstruct. Also, this is then putting you on notice, it's going to be a dusty summer.
I, I meant, I was speaking for people that live there, I don't live there.
That's fair. Okay, okay, my, my mistake. But putting those that live in that neighborhood on notice, you are now in the cycle, anyone who lives there is now in the cycle of it's going to get inconvenient and then it will be better. I think you can keep going, Jesse. So, again, this is a request to perform the study, so this is the first step in the process, getting this out of the way so we can come back to you with a formal cost estimate, hammer out some of those details, do some of that geotechnical stuff. I feel like we're starting to push this forward as, as far as we can in, in the fall, so that we can get back to you with bid results as early as possible, because that is part of the way that we are responsible with your money. So there is a resolution accompanying this, approving, and I believe this one has the two resolutions, since they're technically separate 2005, 2025 projects.
All right, so 2714.
Okay.
Want to do it?
Making a motion for the resolution ordering preparation of report for the 2025 Street Reconstruction Project.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. Then the next page, we got another one on 2715.
Grab that one. I would like to make a resolution ordering preparation of report for the 2025 Street Reconstruction Project.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes, too. Now we got 2025 Lift Station Project Authorization.
So a small amount of lather, rinse, repeat, but just so that we've, we've said out loud what we're doing here. You know, Mound has 30 lift stations, and we have gone on a long journey to rebuild, reconstruct, replace all 30 of those lift stations. We continue to plan for these in the capital improvement plan, the one that is programmed for 2025. We continue to plan for these in the capital improvement plan, the one that is programmed for twenty twenty-five. Formerly referred to here as C four at the, not the explosive, it's an unfortunate moniker. But at the intersection of Woodland and Dove, sort of almost in that same area where we were just talking about on Three Points.
Is that where that fence?
There's a cute little, there's a cute little fence around the.
Yeah, that was that plan, the sightline thing. That's the spot?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and maybe.
Is the fence gonna have to go down?
Jesse, if you scroll ahead just a little bit to the site plan, maybe.
It goes like.
So we're, we're proposing to actually shift the location of the lift station because there's not enough room in that tight, tight corner for us to rebuild a new lift station. So we're gonna move on to some city property just down the block a little bit. That does mean we will probably get into the street to redirect some piping because the sewage has to gravity flow into that lift station. So there'll be a very small amount of street reconstruction associated with this. But then we can get a little bit more room to relocate the lift station, build a new one. One advantage we gain in building a new lift station in a different place is that we reduce costs for temporary pumping. When we rebuild a lift station in the exact same place, then we have to have some sort of temporary pumping facilities. Or perhaps more accurately, we have to pay a contractor to do temporary pumping while he builds a new lift station. So in this case, we let the old one run until the new one is mostly built, we shift flow over.
So that resident would probably be pretty happy.
Tentatively, yeah, when we're done, again with the dusty and inconvenient until we're gone.
What is the city-owned property that it's going on? Is it a commons or?
That's a good question. I don't know that I have details on that exact parcel.
Just curious.
I, I was looking at that actually just before I came up. I couldn't tell from the map if it is right-of-way. It just extends, you know, into the near area. You know, all of these lots are platted way into the lake. Because the bulk of Mound was catastrophally surveyed when the lake level was different prior to Grace Bay. So we've got weird artifacts all over the place. So sometimes there are city-owned parcels that aren't really parcels. You know, they end up just being adjacent to a street. They're unbuiltable. The city couldn't really do much with them. But the point being, we're not gonna have to buy property. We're not gonna place it on somebody else's private property.
Cool. Now sixteen oh nine Dove, maybe your square is a little bigger than it needs to be. But, I mean, how, how big is this new station gonna be?
So you guys have, I mean, think about, yeah, you've seen them. You, you would like me to describe it, yeah. So what we end up with is, is mostly underground, right? And then we have an access hatch or sometimes hatches to get into if there's a manhole immediately adjacent to the structure itself. But it's an underground structure. And then above ground, we've got a, a small-ish municipally-sized generator and a control panel. So the control panel is a stainless steel thing that sticks up above the ground, but it contains all of the electronics. But all of the pumping, all of that stuff, the storage of, of sewage water happens in that underground structure.
And then, I know some of them look nicer than others.
Mm-hmm.
With aesthetic, whatever, wood fence or whatever they have.
Sure.
Is this just gonna be like some of the other ones that are not?
I think those sound like good notes for us to study when you authorize the study.
Yeah. I'm just thinking if I'm that neighbor, I, I don't know, how long that rectangle is really, or is that just real high?
I think that rectangle is bigger than it needs to be, just so you get an idea of where it is. Because when I look at the size of the other one, it's, you know, I think you have some idea that lift station occupies a very small space right in the corner. Or at least the above-ground portions. And then the below-ground structure sort of goes out into the street under the curb a little bit.
Okay, all right.
But that's, that's perhaps a little bit of exaggeration just for illustrative purposes. When we come back with the study, we will definitely have a little bit of a discussion on screening. There's gonna need to be some collaboration with that neighbor.
Right.
Because we're, we're changing things up here.
Well, and the other thing is the two to three across the street, too. I mean, you don't hear them. I mean, obviously, the one neighbor is gonna be really happy.
There's, there's a little bit of a.
Out of our yard, but.
There's a little bit of a whoosh when they come on.
Okay.
You can, you can, you can, you know, it's like water running, water not running.
Yeah, but it's not, I'm waking up in the middle of the night hearing this thing.
No, the, the, probably the worst-case scenario is something happens with it and we have to send out emergency crews in the middle of the night. And then you might wake up to backup beavers and, and flashing lights. You know, in, in your front yard. That is, while unfortunate and not an intended consequence, sometimes a function of operating, you know, municipal infrastructure. We have to take care of it if it fails in the middle of the night.
Cool. All right.
So accompanying this is another resolution. I'm sorry, are there any other questions?
No.
Or want to go any more in depth on that? Then accompanying this is another resolution authorizing the preparation of a study.
All right, two seven one eight, someone wants to do that?
Making a resolution ordering preparation of a report on lift station improvement project for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, can I get, that's a motion.
A motion.
Yeah, sorry, you got me confused because you said a resolution. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion, okay.
Make a motion for a resolution.
Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right.
I'm hanging for one more.
Which one are we on? Sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Twenty twenty-five sidewalk project authorization number twelve.
I don't, I don't know if any of you read through this. There was probably more information than we needed at this juncture. But in the interest of transparency, we've been talking to Hennepin County about these sidewalks. We've been talking in this room about these sidewalks for a number of years. In twenty twenty-three, we made a request to Hennepin County to participate in the cost of replacement along county roads. And so some of what is attached to this in the council packet is the back and forth with Hennepin County. And then ultimately, Hennepin County committing to participating in some dollars. What they've committed to is essentially the five hundred thousand dollars worth of funds for sidewalk replacement. And then there's a somewhat complicated formula that has to do with need and ADA things that results in about another two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But the county is committing to, to participate in some additional upgrades in this corridor. And Jesse, maybe, I can't remember how far in the map is, but that's probably worthwhile now that I'm mentioning it out loud. So the blue is spot replacements. We're looking for toe kicks, non-ADA things, cracked panels, things that are critical. And then in the, the red, just a slightly different, they say greater than fifty percent replacements, but that's where we know we have a lot of banged-up sidewalk. And this is the, the bulk of sidewalk along Shoreline Drive, essentially from right out in front, right at our new pedestrian crosswalk to the east of there, almost to the city extents, but right along Shoreline Drive. And I will point out that there's been sort of a frenzy of things in this area, including Met Council and Hennepin County. All of that was triggered two years ago by the, the county coming out and telling all of the agencies, hey, we're going to mill and overlay Shoreline Drive. What do you got? And things have continued to come out of the woodwork, including other departments at the county. And so we've seen Met Council do a project in this area. You know, we partnered with the county in Three Rivers to do our pedestrian crossing for the trail, which I think looks great, by the way.
Yeah.
It works great, too.
Yeah, yep. Maybe I said it already, but Met Council sewer project. And then the county has also been doing a bunch of, one year they were refixing a lot of the catch basins, the storm sewer infrastructure along the county road. And that required a couple of panels of sidewalk when they were doing that immediately behind the curb. And then they've done some other ADA improvements. And so then this is gonna culminate here with us doing these sidewalk projects. And hopefully, next year, the county finally being able to mill and overlay Shoreline.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot going on at once, but it's nice that they're kind of right in succession with one another.
Yeah, it's intense.
It's intense, but as we, you know, redo like the sidewalks in downtown Mound, you see all the corners kind of getting done. And then as I'm driving to work, it's like you notice just like that area and it kind of makes it stand out more. It's like, oh, man, that's getting pretty bad.
So this is a hundred percent county-funded?
Uh, not a hundred percent. There, there are things that are county-funded. There's a break, there's a breakdown in there that, I was frantically texting Matt earlier.
Sorry, the two twenty.
Not all these numbers foot. If you scroll, Jesse, keep going to the cost estimate that I believe is now just slightly outdated. One, yeah, just a few more pages. There's a, that, that works, that cost participation. This is primarily county-funded.
Yeah. Yeah.
And like, like I said, a lot of this is, is background recitation information. We'll come back to you with updated and clear when we know, you know, right now they're evaluating exactly how much work there is to be done out there. You know, which sidewalk panels need to go, which ones can be fixed, that kind of stuff. So we'll come back with a fully fleshed-out project. Again, this is another request to complete the study. So study to proceed authorization for preparation of plans and specs and bidding a project. So, yeah, there's another cost estimate there where we've got a million dollars, a million, a million fifty for the project. Granted, this is a, a year and a half old, two-year-old cost estimate, I believe, at this point. But if you scroll it back to the right, Jesse, those two columns are nine forty-three county and a hundred and five city participation. So it matches the chart you were just looking at.
Right.
Those need to be updated, but gives you a flavor for what we've been working with.
Right. When you say toe kicks, are you, you talking about just grinding it down?
So, so the Americans with Disabilities Act defines what it means to be ADA accessible.
Yeah.
And they define anything as greater than a quarter-inch variation in a smooth surface. That's what I'm referring to as a toe kick. Some of them can be diamond ground. Some of them are a symptom of a whole panel that is cracked or out of place. So, but that is the standard by which we are trying to gauge these things is, is there a greater than a quarter-inch variation? We gotta fix it. What's the appropriate fix?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I know it's more expensive to fix it, but it looks a lot better than just grinding it all over the place. You know, you look to like downtown, just going south. And they've done that from there to Surfside and it's, I mean, I get it. It's cheaper and it's a fix, but.
It's a, it's a responsible use of our funds. Yes, I, I agree with you. Aesthetically, it's not as pleasing.
No, no.
For sure.
Anyway, forget, good, good job.
One of the, I'll just share a quick little anecdote. You know, I, I deal with some other things at Bolton and Mank, including a bunch of lasers hanging from drones and stuff like that. One of the challenges we have is identifying those, because at a quarter of an inch, when you hang a laser from a drone, is almost too small to be detected. And so the technology has had to catch up with the ADA law.
Right, right.
We've had to find new ways to analyze those changes in sidewalks. So Jesse's happy clicking, but there's a resolution that accompanies this? That approves the study and I don't, I don't know that, you gotta, I'm just teasing you, Jesse, I'm sorry. I don't really need to get back to it. Did you want my tapped answer?
Sidewalks leading to where downtown will look great.
Is it twenty seven nineteen?
Yeah, we didn't have, it was the project approval, but I don't know if we have the actual.
We don't have a resolution on this.
Actual resolution.
Oh, is there not one for there?
No.
I'm sorry.
Just a motion to staff or?
No, there, there's a resolution.
Yeah, it's just not, it's not in bold and I'm guessing it's two seven, well. I was gonna say two seven, two seven, but.
The last resolution was two.
Ordering preparation of report on county road fifteen sidewalks replacement project. Actually, then there's two. There's a go Fairview to Seton and then Seton to the city limits, right? Is that right, Jesse?
Yes.
Yeah.
What page is that?
It's, it's missing from our, yeah, we don't have it in there. But if you can zoom in on it, one of us can.
You're gonna have to read. I can't read that.
Me either.
Can you make it bolder, bigger?
One second. Kessler is not hiding from me here.
Does control scroll work on that one, Jesse?
There you go.
Do you have any idea of what the county's thinking about Wilshire and Bartlett?
In terms of?
Of doing work on them.
Uh, like pavement work?
Yeah, because I, I really want us to get the Andrew Sisters Trail extended on those two streets to complete a, you know, a, a full loop.
So that's, that's an excellent question because functionally, from the county's standpoint, they're going to treat the, the vehicle, the roadway system separate. Sometimes they will allow us to talk them into tying those things together. But in general, the county does, they have a separate budget for, you know, multimodal trails. And they, they usually treat those separate from the, we have to manage the pavements, similar to the chart I just showed you. You know, they're trying to keep their pavements at a specific range to serve all of us as county residents. And so that would be a, a conversation I would say we want to have separately and as loudly as possible. And it doesn't need to be tied to county road work.
Okay.
All right, someone, can someone read that or not?
I would like to make a resolution ordering preparation of report on county road fifteen sidewalks replacement project, Fairview to Seton.
Might I just am I do that?
Say make a motion.
We catch it, but you, I would say make a motion to pass.
Say make a motion to.
I would like to make a motion, motion ordering preparation of report on.
Well, you know, say make a motion to pass a resolution, for a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion for a resolution ordering preparation of a report on county road fifteen sidewalks replacement project, Fairview to Seton.
Did you say third times the term?
Third try. Sorry, I just, when I hear, because you got a motion to make a resolution.
He's back to seconds only after this one, you guys.
I'm like way Robert's rule of order almost.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thanks.
For the resolution.
All right, we got motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes.
And just so you know that when it comes down to the minutes, the intent that you have is.
The intent, sorry.
You both did it.
I should probably have to do it anyway, you know, by now.
All right. And then we got another one, this one?
Yep. I can grab that one, too. I would like, well, maybe I can. I would like to, I'm already shaking. Make a motion for a resolution ordering preparation of report on county road fifteen sidewalks replacement project, Belmont to Fairview.
Got it. All right, motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all.
Appreciate it. Nice to see you. All right, we got number thirteen, twenty twenty-five utility rate approval.
All right, mayor and council, this evening we are considering early in the year, earlier than usual, the twenty twenty-five utility rate schedule. So again, just a quick review, state statute allows us to pass a fee schedule. And this is reviewed on an annual basis. Tonight, we are approving just the utility rate portion early. The regular fee schedule will, the remaining part of the fee schedule will come back to you at the December tenth meeting. So, as you know, in twenty twenty-four, we finalized a utility rate study for wa- for the water and sewer utility funds. So again, utility funds are meant to run like a business. And so the goal of the study was that we needed to review our operations and make sure that we have sufficient cash for capital projects, operations, replacement reserves, and our debt payments. And then again, the purpose, additional goals was to get our funds operating, get funds that are operating currently at a deficit, which is our water and stormwater funds. Get them out of a deficit in a timely manner. We established a new usage tier system that promotes conservation and equitability. So in the PowerPoint, it'll show that before our different categories of users were not paying exactly for what they were using. And so that, it was to get that fixed. Also create a schedule that maintains financial health of the utility funds in the long run. Right now, we rely on the tax levy to help support our sewer fund, and so the goal is to eliminate that eventually. And then again, plan for our long-term improvements, capital improvements. This was reviewed at the June eight, the rate study was reviewed at the June eighteenth city council meeting. And then recently, the financial committee, finance committee met to do a, another review of that utility rate study and get staff's feedback and kind of recommendation on what is being presented this evening. The reason why we are proposing to do this now is we, there are some significant changes to multifamily properties. And we need to get communications out to them, to notify them of the changes. This, one thing that we found with our utility rate study was that we were not meeting state statute as far as how we were charging base fees. We were only charging the property one base fee, and per state statute, we need to be charging per unit. And so we need to kind of commute that, start communicating that change because it is a significant change for multifamily properties. We want them to plan accordingly. it is a significant change, uh, for multifamily properties, we want them to plan accordingly. Uh, so, uh, the utility rates being recommended are within your packet, they are in line with the utility rate study that was reviewed in June. After the adoption of this portion of the utility rates, the fees will go into effect January first, twenty twenty-five, and go into effect the first billing within January of twenty twenty-five. So, in the packet, I did kind of explain what I just summarized in a little bit more detail, um, purpose of the rate study, which utility funds are currently at a deficit, so right now, we are at a five-point-three million deficit in water, and it, about a two million deficit in storm. Next slide shows that in twenty seventeen, the decision at the time was to, uh, cut or keep, uh, certain rates flat for, uh, for a significant number of years, um, and then we cut storm for residential, um, by ninety percent, and that's been kept at zero until this year. And so, um, yeah, so that's, uh, been integral or a major component of why we, where we are today. Uh, this slide just shows where our tiers were in twenty twenty-three. Next slide shows how they've shifted, again, um, we're bringing more, more people into the two lower tiers and, or more users into the lower tiers, and then the higher users, um, there's, uh, we sh, we, so we still have the three tiers, but we're, for the higher users, we're promoting them, uh, to conserve more water, to kind of shift them back into those lower tiers. Again, uh, this, what changed, again, we're, um, multifamily billing changed, and then the tier, or our model now, the current, or what it, yeah, what it currently is, uh, versus revised, we're now having that equitability, so residential's now paying, uh, the expenses that, the revenue that residential's bringing in is now paying for the same percentage of the expenditures. Um, so, this slide kind of paints the picture of, of, um, why we're making the recommendation we are today, so this, we need to get the, our funds healthy. Um, this does include, um, we are using for five years, a hundred sixty-five from our liquor store transfer to help get our fund healthy faster. Um, again, that'll be five years, uh, until twenty twenty-nine. Also, that includes increasing rates. Um, again, if no changes in rates are made, no bonds issued, and planned capital improvements are move ahead, we don't have the, but we don't have the money to pay for it, um, our cash deficit is estimated to grow eight hundred to a million annually, so it'll continue to dive down. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the cash deficit grew by, just to give you an example, seven-hundred-fifty, fifteen thousand.
So if we did nothing by twenty twenty-nine, we'd have like an eight-figure deficit?
We would, if we, so, the city needs to keep maintaining its infrastructure, and so that's, remains a priority, but if we don't cash flow those improvements, yes, we would can keep going into a greater deficit. Um, again, adequate, uh, you answer, okay. Uh, for sewer fund, again, it's making sure we're, in all of our funds, having adequate cash balance while maintaining capital assets and adequately scheduling replacement of So, one thing I want to note, when you look at these rate changes, for twenty twenty-five, they're not straight percentage increases, this is based on the study, and, um, so there will be different percentage changes in each, like, tier or base rate. It's when we get to the next years, um, that it'll be more of a straight percentage increase. So, the twenty twenty-five essentially is the first year benchmark, uh, benchmark rates. But these, um, rates are what our study recommends, um, for twenty twenty-five. And just for you, more for your information, um, we included the rate study user impacts for commercial, what we expect them to be for commercial, multifamily, and residential, and you will see that, um, multifamily does change significantly again, because we have to do that base fee change. On, if you can keep going down, Jesse. So here, um, this just kind of shows you where our, where our rates were in twenty twenty-seven, I mean, twenty seventeen, when we, when the city council decided to stop increasing rates, where we are in twenty-four, and what that, the new rates are gonna be for different, um, usage groups. So you can see, um, I, I, I think it gives a good visual of kind of, again, where we were in the past, where we are today, and where we're heading for those different groups. The next page also paints a good picture of where our, um, utility bill, like, it's a utility bill comparison, um, for fourteen thousand gallon usage in twenty twenty seventeen, and it was around twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four that we actually were at that same level again. Um, this gives us a visual of where we sit with other neighboring communities. Um, again, this was based on information from the study that was presented earlier in the year, there's a lot of communities around us doing significant projects as well, similar to us, and so, um, a lot of these, I, I think by next year, this would look very different.
I'm excited to see, or interested to see that same slide next year.
Yeah. So, per the rate study, this is kind of, again, to get us out of, um, the deficit and that our fund's healthy in ten years. The significant, um, just to get us out in five years out of the deficit, these are the recommended increases, um, between twenty-six and thirty-three. So, just a reminder, the storm fund utility did not receive a full analysis, um, in the utility rate study, but, um, staff did do an internal analysis, and we are recommending, uh, let's see, we are requi, we, let's go to the next page. We do know that, um, you know, again, this fund is operating in a deficit, we need to get it healthy, and so we are recommending a, um, slight change in the storm water fees, um, but, wanted to go through this, again, back in two thousand seventeen, um, between those two, two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, we s, that decrease that was made to the residential storm actually, um, reduced our revenue by four hundred three thousand in that fund, so I just wanted to
Every year.
Show that, every year. And so then, um, our revenue went down to about one forty, and so then, it put a lot of the, uh, revenue, a lot of that per, um, a lot of that then went to commercial, so it, it changed kind of this, the, um, how it was billed and which user group was kind of funding that fund the most, and so, in, um, to cor, start correcting that, staff is recommending a six-dollar increase to residential, um, so that would increase that y, next year by eighty-eight thousand, um, and then start kind of getting us on the track where we need to get that fund healthy, and then start making, um, that correction where residential's starting to pay for...
So to clarify, that, that six-dollar increase was, it's quarterly, correct?
Yes, it is quarterly, so it'd be two dollars a month. Sorry, I might have misspoke. Um, yeah. So, including your packet, are, um, it's a resolution that would adopt the rates per our rate study and per staff recommendation. And then, again, we would bring the rest of the rate information back to you in December. Um, that's a lot of information. Do you have any questions?
Uh, does Council have any questions?
Um, are the condominium developments in the city, are they charged similarly to multifamily, or are they charged as individual homeownership units?
I believe those are currently under multifamily, and so, um, I can check with the financial, finance director, but, yes, so they, essentially, if they are not being charged correctly, we would have to communicate with them, yes, that they would have to be charged like a single-family residential home.
One of the things, um, I've gotten a couple of calls from several members of some of the condominiums, and their homeownership fees are going up significantly, because the insurance costs have like doubled, really skyrocketed on them, to the point that we're also seeing a lot of sales
Yeah.
of those units, because we have a strange market, we have condos that are selling under two hundred thousand.
Right. But their association is super high.
But their association is like five hundred, but now it's going up
Right.
even more, and with, with our utility rate, we're adding to that as well. So I think we, we just need to be aware of what's going on.
I have a question about the fee schedule, ki, kind of. So earlier in this presentation, you had mentioned that we review that on December tenth.
Yes, so, uh, any fee changes from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five with regards to like building permits and dock fees, that all comes back to, it's staff recommended, so...
But that's like final review, right? Because we passed the final budget that same meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, so I, I, I believe it would come to the finance committee first.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And then, um, yep.
Cool.
Can you go back to page twenty-seven thirty-two, almost at the beginning? So, Costelano and I, um, were on the finance and budget committee, and, you know, looking at this stuff, we don't take it lightly to, you know, raise any fees if we don't have to, obviously. I've also called Ellers and spoke with, uh, I'm blanking her name.
Stacy?
Stacy, Stacy. And I said, is there any other way that we can use the levy to try to get revenue versus, you know, when I get my water bill, and I pay that, that number at the bottom, you know? I looked at an old post that I did when I first moved to town here, this is partly why I'm here, because I was like, I looked at my bill, and I said, in St. Michael, where I came from, my, I converted to monthly, but it was, you know, it was like a twenty-five-dollar, it was, and it was a hundred here. I'm like, four times my, my water bill, that's, that's insane, you know, what are we doing here? Well, and again, this was back, I moved here in sixteen, December sixteen, so seventeen, probably when I did, when I said that. A little bit why I wanted to run for council in twenty twenty was because of this issue as well, like, our, our water bill is insane. Now, other cities have caught up to us.
Yeah.
Which is good and bad, I mean, it's good, because we're not the, you know, the highest per se anymore, but, you know, it's not good, right? But, I mean, worth five-point-three million in the hole already, as it is.
Yeah.
We don't really have a choice, so, you know, I, I'm, I know we're all gonna hear some of this next year, that, you know, we don't have a choice, we have to, we have to, we can't keep going, I mean, what is it, seven hundred some thousand if we don't, per year, if we don't?
Yeah, like, what I had said earlier is it would be over ten million by twenty twenty-nine if we didn't change.
Yeah.
And then we're on a plan to get it flat by then.
You, you can't, and, and so I was asking Stacy from Ellers, I was like, can we do a little bit more on the, on the levy side and then shift it? And she's like, it's just not how you do it. And I know I talked to, uh, Jesse, our city manager as well, um, and then, of course, Maggie and Noah, too, and that's just not how you do, you know, you gotta, you gotta make money where it's coming from, on the utility side, so, um, you know, five-three in the hole, we don't really have a choice, we've got to somehow get out of that hole a little bit, I mean, and our goal is twenty thirty, that's not that aggressive, but it's far enough out where it's, it's gonna be a little bit painful along the way, but part of it is, we got an issue with our drinking ability of water.
Right.
It's manganese, and obviously, more to come on that, we're working on that behind the scenes, a lot to come on that next year, but, um, we kind, we, we have to, we don't really have a choice, we have to kind of get out of this hole here, and then, of course, our storm, you know, as well, you know, so, um, it is what it is, we, we all signed up for this, now, you know, we're kind of up here dealing with it, but, um, again, I, I just want to kind of push this through a little bit, so people can, if they want to watch this later, but can you go to the next slide? I know you just said all this, but, um, you, you can see in twenty eighteen, you know, water, uh, you know, zero percent, and it, does it show, it doesn't show two thousand seventeen, but, um, you know, we never raised it
Yeah.
from eighteen to twenty-two. We did start doing it a couple of years ago, three and three, right? Sewer's been above flat, storm, I mean, we, we never, we just got rid of it, and then never, never did anything with it.
Never reviewed it again.
And then recycling, you know, that kind of, that'll be every other, every few years, it'll, our contract will be...
It's hard for people to understand why are they paying for storm.
Right.
You know, it's not in their control.
Right.
But this table also shows, like, you know, the inflation we had twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, and we didn't, we didn't adjust to keep up with it at all.
Yeah. And then, just keep going to the next, next one there. So this one, again, this is kind of where we are now, but then, if you go to the next slide, the, the whole point of this, and I know Maggie, you already said all this, but, i, if you don't want your water bill to be high, don't use as much water, right? So you do have control of, partly is, we have to raise the bottom fees, right? We just don't have a choice, but part of it is, if you can conserve, that's kind of what we're doing here, so we're, we're trying to push people over more to, to the side, and you can account on it more, too. So if you're like number forty-six there, or whatever, there's twenty households that are using, was it forty-six gallons or whatever?
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand gal, I mean, you're obviously using a lot of water, you're gonna be paying for more water, you know? And so, we, we kind of said, let's put most of amount, seventy-eight percent, in the first and second, where before, uh, ninety-five, we're in the first and second, so we're kind of tearing it off a little bit to say, you know, let's try to help or, you know, conserve water if you can. That can, you know, hopefully lower your, your bill. You know, I know, I have two kids, they shower and bath, you know, um, me, my wife, I mean, we have dogs, I mean, I don't water my lawn, um, at all, but, you know, I, I get it, you know, if you, there's ways you can do it, I don't know, it's kind of hard sometimes, you gotta take showers, but, um, and then maybe just go to the next, two, not, maybe two down.
Well, big ways of conserving water is use your dishwasher, that's a big...
I just heard that.
You didn't know that word?
Well, I just heard, saw a commercial, and they're like, yeah, if you don't rinse your dishes as much, and just throw them in there, that's if they get clean, I guess.
Yeah, washing your dishes in the sink is a lot of water.
Yeah, I heard, yeah, the statistic was high. Um, so again, this is just a chart for if we do nothing, and I like that you added the note on the right side, that, you know, our deficit will grow another, you know, eight, eight hundred to a million, even in twenty twenty-three, we grew it by seven fifteen, you know, because you can see where we're going down, 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 we need to start kind of getting back out, and we are taking a hundred and sixty-five transferred from the liquor store. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're pulling where we can, you know, where it's, you know, the right way to do it, but, um, so again, just when we go to, you know, vote on this thing, you know, we're not taking this lightly, we understand what we're doing here, um, but I also feel like we can just kick it, and kick it, and kick it, kick the hand on the road.
Yeah.
But this is kind of the job we signed up for, I guess, so...
Yep.
Well, one thing to keep in mind is when you, wh, when you go for, out for bonds, and you are not
When you're in debt.
When you're, when you... When you're, when you're taking that strategy, that can impact your credit rating. And then your bond, your interest ends up being more. And so there are unfortunately consequences too to, to not find, following a financial plan.
Well, the nice thing is I think that we did implement a financial plan. And I know in our committee meeting, you know, we're, we're saying, well, you know, we could either lower it over here or raise it. I said, let's just follow the plan. We pay for a plan, let's just follow the plan. This is, you know, the, the experts are telling us, this is how you do it, this is how you get out of it.
They need professional help.
Yeah, let's just keep, you know, let's just follow what we're doing. So I say, we gotta follow the plan. The plan says do this. And again, what you can do as a resident is try to conserve as much as you can, you know? And that should help you out a little bit, so. Anyway, that's my speech.
I guess I just want to add to, I mean, it bears repeating for everyone to hear that Maggie said this already. But there's a table that shows in there that changing the rate structure, the way that elders helped us too, does, you know, make it right for residents. And everyone's paying for what they use. It's more equitable, you know, residents were kind of subsidizing some commercial after that. So I mean, this would be, the rates would be adjusted differently if we hadn't got this, the great work that elders did done. So it's kind of the best case scenario. And everyone should shop at Harbor, mine and spirits.
So one last thing too, we were doing this wrong for sixteen years.
Yeah.
Sixteen years.
That's right.
There's a state statute that says that, you can explain it better, but that we're charging wrong. So in other words, what we're doing is you, you have a duplex or apartment unit. And we're charging basically for one meter, where we should have been charging for meters in each unit. So we understand that, that sucks, you know? At the same point, remember mound was subsidizing you for sixteen years. You know, the rest of us were paying your water bill basically. So I, I know that's gonna be, and that's what we're trying to get ahead of. Now that we've cognitively figured out that we're not doing it right through this financial plan, we can't not do it. We can't not change that multifamily, change what we're talking about.
Yeah, we can't not follow statute.
We can't, yeah, now that we all know. So, and that's what Maggie and Noah are trying to get ahead of too. So we're gonna send letters to, I know we've already talked, well, I've talked to one already. But, you know, we gotta get the word out to, you know, these multifamily units so that they're prepared, so.
You know, it's, it's a lot of education that we have to do.
Right.
So I think, you know, those inserts, it's interesting how Excel, separate from my bill from them. I get that letter that shows the graph that says you're using more or less than your neighbors.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and I, and I look at it and I always say, okay, you know, but at least, at least I know where I'm at on the scale.
Yeah.
And I, and I say, okay, well, that's what I'm gonna pay, you know, cause I use less or more.
Well, hopefully with our new program, residents will not, like with the invoice cloud, will have two years of data. So that, I think that'll be helpful too, to, so residents can understand their trends a little bit better.
And just little things like the hints about the dishwasher, garbage disposals. You know, everyone thought garbage disposals are really great, they're really not.
Really?
And they back up your system.
Oh.
You know, so it's, we have, you know, the, the, what do you call it? The, the other trash now.
Recycled?
Well, the recycle.
Oh, the compost.
Compost.
Yep.
Compost is what you put in your, in your garbage disposal.
Yeah.
You know, put it in there and bring it over to the city for free.
Yeah, it's right over here. Alright, well, any other discussion on this?
No.
Alright, okay, so we have a resolution on twenty seven fifty two, if someone wants to make a motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion for a resolution adopting utility rates for twenty twenty five.
Alright, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Thank you guys for.
Thank you, Maggie.
Alright, comments and reports, council members, councilor Pugh?
Okay, I have a lot of things. No, not really. I wrote them down, so I forget.
Maggie, while we're waiting, can you queue up the video?
Okay. So Gillespie Center is really making progress, you know? Rhonda, the new director, has got them doing all kinds of fundraisers. They've started a walking group and I think that they may be applying for an age friendly grant to help support the walking group. And, you know, to grow that as a, a city thing, you know, to have walking groups. And also I met this week with our fire chief to talk about if there was something they could apply for. And the age friendly, especially around this call to falls at home. You know, that there are some partnerships and collaborations that they could do. And sort of rethink, you know, what is a fire department these days, you know? So anyway, he's gonna get back to me and will probably be coming to the city with the proposal for what he wants to do. Let's see, can I read my writing now? Oh, and, and the parks commission, this year we're scheduled to redo Chester Park. And so for people who don't know, Chester Park is the park where Alan Alma's boats launch from. A lot of people think it's their property. You know, so it's, it's our park, it's an all wooden structure park and it has some accessibility issues. So it needs a lot of work and, you know, the public works people have been looking at it. But the commission, we were talking, we thought maybe we should rethink this park. You know, because down the road and the Minatrista border, Minatrista has a really nice play park. That's fenced in. And then, you know, the other direction, we have, gosh, I'm gonna forget the name of our park. It's where the old mound, the old island park town hall was, where the pickleball courts are.
Is it Philbrook?
Phil, no, not Philbrook, Swanson, Swanson. So we, Swenson, we've got two, two parks already pretty close there. And given that Chester is used by people on the Alan Alma tours mostly, you know, should we rethink it? Should it be maybe, maybe it's a park that you have chess boards on or something? So we, we were thinking of sending a letter to residents, asking them to go and, you know, walk the park and tell us their ideas. And then in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty five, I'm sorry, we would hold kind of like a town hall meeting to get input, rethink our parks.
Would you send a letter to everybody or just in that area?
Just in that area.
Okay.
You know, people would use it. So that's one of the things we came up with, the parks commission. Age friendly grants are due in November, early part of December, so people can look at that. Oh, a question that I got and I didn't have an answer to. One, farmer's market is closed, people were very happy at the end. In the last market, they were talking about how the residents from Artesa were coming over. And so they were really excited about the new residents coming to the market. And they were excited about seeing the park really evolving and said they couldn't wait till next year to come back. So that was good, good ending of the year for them. But also today I got a question from someone and they said, I hear they're gonna have a fire ring out there. And I said, yeah, we're gonna have a fire ring. And they said, is it gonna be gas or wood? And I didn't have an answer, I, I don't know. I don't think we ever talked about that, did we?
Not yet.
Yeah.
That might be some cities that have either or, you know?
So I made a comment to the resident today.
Yeah.
And I said, well, we're gonna have a, you know, bonfire.
Uh huh, and they said same thing to you?
For, well, no, so I, maybe that's, maybe, maybe that spurred a question, I don't know. I think this, you know, this year would just be on the gravel section there. But next year, I don't know. I don't remember what the plans are.
Excelsior has gas and then Wazada has wood and it's kind of, could be either, I guess.
I don't know if it's cheaper, safer, maybe it's something to ask fire department about.
I can't remember what's in the plans, I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I don't think there was plans for gas.
Maybe we didn't get there because it's phase two or three.
Yep, Matt is chomping at the bit to come back.
Oh, Matt, okay, what was it?
He wants to get started soon, so you guys will have a chance to, to hear from him as he presents and pitches, starting phase two as soon as possible, so.
And maybe a landscape architect that isn't an engineer.
Okay, so that's pretty much most of my report. I think I got everything. I got the fire pit, I got the farmer's market, yep.
Alright.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Costello?
I don't have anything, I'm anticipating you might have some notes from today later, but I didn't have any, I don't have anything else.
Okay. So the three of us were at the Artesa mound Harvard grand opening today, ribbon, ribbon cutting, I should say. They've been in there for a month or so, I think end of August. The first week, I think twenty two residents or something moved in. From what we heard today is that they're down, they only have nine open.
Nine open units.
Units, so that's amazing, that's awesome. Usually, once you get the building up.
Yeah, it goes.
It's, it's, yeah, it's a matter of time. And plus you walk in there, I mean, I mean, you guys can make comments, but it's phenomenal, it's beautiful.
I think you said three of those nine might have been sold already too.
Yeah.
Oh, right?
Yeah, three, yeah, three were.
Okay, well, you got six, so if you're hearing this, you live down there. So anyway, that was, that was a, a good event today. The, I just want to read this from Hennepin County. So this is, this is to inform you that the US Board on Geographic Names at its October tenth, twenty twenty four meeting approved the proposal to apply the new name Gold's Cove to a previously unnamed bay in Hennepin County. Just a background, Gold's Cove Bay, approximately one point eight acres located off Harrison Bay on Lake Minnetonka in the city of mound. The name commemorates Mayor Mike Gold, sorry, ma- not mayor, like mayor, but M E Y E R. Mike Gold nineteen twenty to two thousand and three and Sylvia Gold nineteen fourteen to two thousand and eleven, who previously owned, owned the land surrounding the cove. And then it just got the meridians and the GPS. So I don't know if you guys remember that, do you remember that from, was you were here? This is a couple of years ago?
Well.
They wanted a name with Gold's Cove, they came in front of us.
Right.
We didn't have any issues with it, they went for it. So anyway, I just got an update that it's all finished, so.
So it's officially named, where, where is it exactly?
It's in Harrison Bay.
Harrison Bay.
Like the end of it?
I think so.
Or is it like the?
I can give you the GPS.
South side of it, yeah.
One point eight acres located off Harrison Bay in the city mound, I, I don't know.
Okay.
So, I, this is your two vote.
It's not where the people who live back up onto commerce, that's not theirs, is it? Or at.
Do you know where it is, Jesse? I have hand.
I don't.
Okay.
I'll look it up.
You have to look it up.
Anyway, well, congrats to, you know, I knew the, the group came in front of us a year or two ago and they wanted to name that. I think it was their family members or something, so. Anyway, that's, that's done now. Actually, Jesse and I both went to Hennepin County, Commissioner, Commissioner Edelson had us out. Really all the mayors and city managers in the, in her area. So, I mean, anywhere from Edina to, well, Minatrista wasn't there, you know, Orno.
Minatrista is part of her district though, isn't it?
Yeah, I didn't see her there though.
Oh, no, Minatrista's part of Kevin's district.
Oh, it might be Kevin, yeah, you're right, that's probably why.
Minatrista in St. Bonnie.
Sure.
So she would have all the other lake cities.
Yep. So, let's see, what was the update on that? One of the, one of the things that some of the mayors were talking about was that they wanted to have the county take over the elections. We said.
Because they're early voting.
Well, so it actually, I'm sure Maggie can account for this, but Maggie was supposed to go to our ribbon cutting as well. And she's like, you know, I can't, I'm so busy doing the election, but I'm doing it. So this, remember this old, what they did, they changed these rules, right? That you can, you know, instead of mailing it back or dropping it back, now you can all this, do all this early voting and stuff. So it is a tax on the city, it's taxing us, I should say, it's not a tax, but it's, you know, it's using our people.
Takes up staff time.
Takes up staff time and they got other things that they gotta do, right? All the other things we want them to do. So I get where there, some people are coming from. At the same point, me personally, and I don't know if you guys feel the same way, but I say, you know, no, you need to keep it in the city. Not let the county, you know, you know, you know, you're just gonna hear, it's local control versus, you know, you get it too big and I think that's gonna be an issue. So there's a few people that were kind of asking for it, but at the same point, I think I would be like, well, hey, can you help us out financially? But we would keep doing it or give us more help with staff or, you know?
You know, I wonder, would maybe a solution be to ask people who are the election judges if they would staff early voting days?
We could, but you, you remember.
No, we don't pay them.
Catherine, remember she was like, you know, it's hard enough just to get, people show up on election day?
Well, that's what she said, but we've, I don't know, mound's always had enough judges.
I mean, we've had on, on the day, people step up.
And we've had people judge for twenty and thirty years. I mean, my, my dad was a judge for twenty five years.
Yeah.
You know, and there are a lot, we had, at one time mound had the longest tenured election judge in the whole state. It was a woman, she was like in her nineties and she was quite, she was in the precinct too.
Okay.
At Bethel.
I think Maggie wants to say something.
I was just gonna say, it, it's, it is tough staffing. And I think it would be really challenging with election judges too, because it would be a full day for about a month. And, yeah, it is, it, we're having challenges already for election day. So it, it's just a challenge, I think all cities are having like the staffing part of it, so. It's a, yeah, it is, it is taxing on, on staff time. But you know, it's something that we, you know, right now it's a mandatory for us to do and that's a great service that we provide. For people to be able to do it, but yeah, it is. Yeah, it's tough. The other city I worked for in Carver County, Carver County does it, but then it's, again, everybody has to drive to Carver County then. And so it's, everybody does a little different, so.
Probably just heard our fire engines out there, but the next comment was EMS response time. We have really good response times with, you know, our fire and police and stuff. But you, you know, just thinking about where, we have, I think, Jesse, was this your comment, one of your comments?
Oh, that we use Ridgeview?
We use Ridgeview. You know, so we're, we're shipping people, you know, way over here or way over there. Is there a way to better our times, you know, for the ambulance part, right? So anyway, there, again, these are just things that we all, as a bunch of mayors and city managers said, that were issues. So again, these are things that they're gonna look into and work out. Other cost sharing with the county, the sheriff's office with the LMCD Lake Patrol. So they're gonna meet with Sheriff Witt on how to, you know, work through that a little bit, I guess. Embedded social workers, we're gonna see if they, they can tweak anything to, to fit our, our model better. We're, I think, I think happy with our model. At the same point, there's other cities that are just like, it's not good enough for us, we want our own. And then they, you know, we're a smaller city, so we haven't done that and probably can't do that. But again, just an interesting thing. And then communication at the end of the day, you know, just how, how can, especially our commissioners, you know, how, how can they communicate better with, you know, us and councils in our city to make sure that, hey, if something happens in our town, you know, we wanna know about it. Or if you're gonna come out and do something, please give us a heads up. The, you know, I'm doing these fire department meetings. Nothing really updated since, I think I said it last time, but I think we have a meeting in the next two weeks or so.
It's before the next council meeting.
Before the next council meeting. So more to come on that. This is for the kids, uh, mayor for the day is happening again. So, working with the school district, uh, really the middle school and the principal there to do that. So she's gonna get the top three from Mound this time, so not just, you know, the school is in Mound, right? But the kids are not from Mound, so she's actually gonna look at their address and say, okay, if you're actually in Mound. So it'd be kind of, I think, a little bit more special even to have three from Mound. And I know, I think Minatrista's doing the same, um, for them. Uh, so that should come. Uh, sometime in November, I think I'm gonna get the final three and then maybe we can get them entered December, it's gonna be a long meeting. West Tonka Schools, as you know, haven't been here in a while, right?
I think I have been.
Yeah, I just reached out, there's, um, the person that used to coordinate, um, stepped aside, so I'm kind of. Found the, the other person to talk to, um, and they said, yeah, give us your, your schedule and so we're gonna maybe get them back on. You know, maybe monthly was a little bit much, but maybe every other month. I mean, we're kind of already halfway through the first half of the year, but. It's the twenty-second, you still have until the thirty-first Halloween to do Citizen of the Year Award. Maggie, have we gotten, what, a small handful so far?
Um, three.
Three so far? So if anybody else wants to, uh, do that, um, citymound.com, you'll see that out there or check our Facebook, uh, page too. The new park, as you guys saw.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Oh, my gosh.
I walked it.
Did you?
Mm-hmm, the new, I walked the promenade.
Nice. That promenade is like hardcore, that's pretty cool. I mean, it's really, how, how wide is that?
Don't put me on the spot now.
Okay, it's wa- it's very wide.
It's comfortable.
It's very comfortable and it was a stamped concrete or something? It's beautiful, I mean, it's beautiful, it really is.
And even the white concrete, the curving walk back, you know, that's over close to the, um. The villas, that's a nice sidewalk too.
Yeah. So, yeah, anyway, that's, that's amazing. Okay, so let me check if I have any last things, I don't think so, okay, so let's do, one last thing, uh, so Maggie prepared this, uh, video.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't prepare it, I.
Well, you coordinated it. She, she was in the basement.
Credit for the, the work.
Right, so.
Productions.
She spearheaded this project and, uh. Anyway, I think she's, did a phenomenal job. So we'll watch the video and, um, hopefully you guys like it and we can go live tomorrow with it.
Cool.
All right, we can hear it, right, hopefully?
Can we turn the lights down? Or at least the lights on us?
Okay. Give me one second.
When I, when it fired up right away, it sounded like it was coming through the speakers, so I think it.
It was, it's actually, I, I wanna give credit, so our, um. Andrew does our city council meetings and he worked on this video, so shout out to Andrew and his friends.
Upstairs.
Man behind the green light.
Yep.
Oh, no, it does come through here, all right, so. We're gonna do this.
Can you start over? Sorry, all right.
Mound, Minnesota, a city on the shores of Lake Minnetonka. It's a great place to live, work. And play. Located just twenty miles west of Minneapolis, you can enjoy the excitement of being close to the big city. While being in a place with a hometown feel. So come visit Mound, whether it's by car. Light. Or boat. If you love beautiful natural landscapes, charming local shops, restaurants and friendly people. Mound has what you're looking for.
That's a nice shot.
So stop by. Get in the water. Jump on the trail. Grab a bite to eat. And experience Mound, Minnesota. Can't wait to see.
So, will this go on that Explore Minnesota page for us?
I would say wherever, whatever you want, I mean, we can put it everywhere. But yeah, that's a good spot for it.
Yeah.
So I would say tomorrow or whenever, social.
Well, Explore Minnesota is, you know, the state's page and it.
Right.
Advertizes all the cities.
Yeah. Well, Jesse and Maggie, can you try to get us on there?
Yeah, they've, they've met with them.
Cool.
Perfect. So, anyway, you guys like it or?
Yeah.
Good.
Well, good job, Maggie and.
Good job, producer Maggie.
Andrew, thanks upstairs.
And Emmy, or, or Grammy, or, no, an Oscar, Oscar.
So, obviously, this is one video, right? We could always do more, it, it wasn't that expensive at all, very reasonable. So, it's up to, I guess, what we want Maggie to work on, but, you know, we could do one, you know, exploring, you know, public safety or our fire department or. You know, more historical, uh, or parks, I mean, I mean, we, it's endless now, you know. This is, you know, a marketing, let's try to get people here, right? So, anyway, I think, I think you all did a good job.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, like the mayor said, this is kind of this step one, the big video that's more marketing and then, but. The idea was we could always do shorter videos too with other departments, just letting people know about. Fire department, public works, you know, what we do around the city, so.
City internal probably.
So I suppose by nature of the video, like you want them to be like two minutes or less, you know, it's like. I. You put up a five-minute video and people are like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't be longer than a TikTok.
There you go. Yeah, two, even two, I was like, yeah, that's kind of long, but I think it, it plays real well. Uh, it shows where we're at, I mean, highlights a couple of things, but enough to get you interested. So, yeah, can you put that on our website? Maybe somewhere prominent, if we can, um, and I would just keep it there. And then, of course, social and Instagram and all that. Yeah, so, anyway, good job. All right, well, that's all I got. Any reports from, uh, the city?
Staff.
I think we're okay.
Said it all. All right. All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.